Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is March 30, 2021, and this meeting is hereby called to order. I'm going to ask our clerk to please call the rule and establish quorum.
Supervisors Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And Serna?
Here.
And I apologize, but I don't have my, I don't have my meeting statement.
Just do it from memory.
I'm going to try.
That's okay, we've got time.
Okay. Can you go with your announcements and start with that?
Sure, of course.
And I'll pull them up, thank you.
Yes. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is livestreamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal content, comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in a queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when the best time to call, to be placed in the queue to make a public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. When I open public comments for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, the clerk will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one comm, public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. Written comments are always accepted. Please send your email comment to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your patience.
Okay, so this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at sacmetricable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated, repeated Friday, April 2nd at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUPU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any local library branch. Thank you. And I wonder Supervisor Serna, if you would be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess we're ready to move into our timed matters. Okay, so for your item today, you only have one item. This is to direct staff to continue developing a 24/7 mental health crisis response system to be included in the county's fiscal year 2021/22 revised recommended budget.
Good morning.
Bruce Wagstaff, Deputy County Executive. Want to thank you for this special meeting today to go over this important proposal that we've been working so hard on. I wanted to offer some initial comments, and then we're going to turn it over to our Acting Director of Health Services, Jim Hunt, to do the full presentation. But there has been a lot of work done on this proposal since the last time that we were before you. Today, we are providing the feedback that you requested on three different models for how we might approach this system. And we have continued our effort to have extensive discussions in the community with various stakeholders, including at your request, the various police chiefs from the cities within our county. You learn on a project like this that as you do more, you learn more. And as you're going to hear in Jim's presentation, there have been some significant events that affect what we're recommending to you as an approach on this system. In particular, at the federal level, you'll hear Jim describe that in the New Relief Act, there is significant funding that is available for projects like this at the enhanced federal Medicaid rate that we certainly want to look at and explore and really could have tremendous impact on what we propose and certainly how we fund what we propose. We've also had discussions at the state level because at the state level, there is legislative effort underway to establish a statewide system along these lines. So we wanted to make sure that we're up to speed on everything that's going on there and make recommendations to you that are consistent with that. So a lot of work being done. We're happy to present this feedback to you today. We look forward to a dialogue with you on this and your direction, and I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Bruce.
Well, Bruce is certainly right. The more you look at something like this, the more you learn. Good morning, great to be here. Jim Hunt, your Acting Director of Health Services. As Bruce mentioned, you had some very specific requests for us at our last hearing on February 24th that we develop proposals for call center and crisis response, mobile crisis response, seven days a week at eight, 16, and 24 hours each. Now, I have to say Flo Evans and her staff are just wonderful and do a very good job on your behalf to let departments know exactly what you expect from us. And this, this is the laundry list that Flo and her staff put together as follow-up items from our last meeting. And I just want to talk about some of them. Actually, I want to talk about all of them. But what we've learned in the last five weeks is that, as Bruce said, the more you do, the more you learn, and we still have a long way to go. But here's what we've done on each one of these, exploring funding options we have, and much of that will be included in this presentation. Working with local jurisdictions, we have and will continue to do that. Notably, we've met with city police chiefs. We had an individual, individual meeting with the Citrus Heights Police Chief, representing all of the city police chiefs, and then had a subsequent virtual meeting with all of the city police chiefs. Our Sheriff's Department participated in our initial planning, and they, of course, will be included in future meetings as well. Collect one year of 911 data. That's done, thanks to our Sheriff's Office, and I'll present that in one of the graphs in a few minutes. Determine if the program impacts consent decree. I think you heard in a previous presentation from Britt Ferguson that we looked at that, and any impact would be very minimal and certainly isn't going to help us with a consent decree.
Excuse me, Jim, Supervisor Natoli has a question.
Yeah, Jim, just a backup on that chart. I was going to ask you, when working with the local jurisdictions, so I heard you say you met with the police chiefs virtually, was the Sheriff's Office representative, because they provide under contract to both the City of Ranch Cordova and the City of Iltin. So did they have a representative on the, on the call?
Iltin was not.
Well, no, Iltin is, it's a sheriff's contract.
Right. I don't believe so.
Supervisor, we've, we've had the Sheriff's Department involved in our planning effort on this since day one on this. They weren't on that particular call because they wanted to reach out to those chiefs that we had now you talked to.
Okay.
So that was the focus of our call.
Okay. No, I appreciate the follow-up. Again, obviously, we'd heard that, you know, from, from a number of the jurisdictions. I was just curious because, you know, the police chief in Ranch Cordova, obviously, is appointed by the city council, but that's still contracted under the Sheriff's Department. And Iltin, obviously, pretty small jurisdiction, but nonetheless, those services down there are provided by the sheriff under contract as well, so.
Right.
Okay, so they've been, they've been integral into the discussions as relates to, to all this, the Sheriff's Department has.
And have to be a part of future discussions, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
The City of Galt was represented, their chief was on the call.
Okay, good, thanks.
Determine how program can integrate with current jurisdictional response systems. That obviously is a part of our meeting with the city police chiefs. But notably, we want to be able to coordinate with the city's Department of Community Response. You may have seen the article in the paper over the weekend about what they're trying to do. And Dr. Quist has been in contact with Bridget Dean, their department director, and more will follow. We want to complement their efforts to not conflict or compete. And it's, it's really extremely important that we do coordinate and fully understand what we're both doing, and hopefully, we can develop a program that will be mutually beneficial and will be a benefit for all of our people in Sacramento. Reach out to WEVE, we've done that. We have a good relationship with them, expect that to continue. They are a fabulous resource, and we'll continue to be a great partner. Look into federal legislative efforts, as Bruce mentioned, we've done that, and we'll discuss some of that in the presentation. Reach out to the Chronic Offenders Program, that'll be part of our discussions with the police departments. Provide cost savings, we have not done that, we're just too early in the process to try and give you any kind of a figure on that. Look into using COVID relief funds. The $59 million that recently came down is entitled "The Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Funding." And the State Department of Public Health is taking a very literal interpretation of that. On our request for some things that might fall just outside of that parameter, they have told us they're not allowable. And so it's, it's pretty clear that this program for crisis response is not going to be able to be funded through that money. So we talked about full-year calls for service. Thanks to the Sheriff's Department, they have provided us with their 2019 calls for mental health service. And as you can see from their footnote, these, you know, this is not an exact science, but these are the best numbers they have, and, and we're relying on them for gauging when during the day these types of responses are required. And this is very much in line with the last presentation where we showed you five months of data from 2020. And it's just a little amusing that it's just completely opposite of what you expect. The principal time when we see these calls is midday. What we did determine was that the day shift includes about 53.4% of all calls, and the 16-hour coverage, which would be the day shift, and a swing shift would receive about 87% of all calls.
Excuse me, Jim, Supervisor Desmond?
Sir.
Sorry, thanks, just on this slide specifically. Did you get any additional statistics from the cities that you've been talking to about their 911 calls?
No.
Okay. Because I think that would be very helpful to see that, too, because I imagine it's going to be more than double this, maybe triple what we see here.
Yes, this, and I should say, this is a minimal number. I mean, you look at the total number of 1,500, that does not encompass the universe, and also, it doesn't encompass those folks who are reluctant or afraid to call 911. And what we see in other jurisdictions is a dramatic increase in calls if there's a standalone call center, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. So looking at program models, we looked at the STAR program model, and you're familiar with this.
Excuse me, Supervisor Kennedy?
I'm sorry, Jim, I jumped in late because I wanted to follow up on that. So these numbers are strictly on incorporated areas?
Correct.
Okay, so that would dramatically change if we were to include just the City of Sacramento, even?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, while we're on that chart, Jim, so I went back and pulled the material that was, as you just referenced, given to us for January, May of 2020, that period of time. This is for the entire calendar year of 2019. The charts are populated a little differently. I mean, if you did a side-by-side comparison, recognizing you have a full year here, and I look at the one from, it was given out at the hearing in February for the board, and the concentration is still in that same, that general area, but, but I'm looking at it, and there were, and I won't call them anomalies, because I'm not sure they, that's probably not the right term, but there were, on either end of that spectrum, some oranges and reds that now are, you know, either different shades of green and/or, and so, again, and it, you know, it's reflective, obviously, of the way this, you know, the calls are pulled when they come in. And I guess I'd be curious, is there any way for them to pull the entirety of 2020 so we could see that as we're talking about this? You know, I know this requires a good deal of effort to do this, but.
Yes, yes.
But, but this is, you know, the currency of 2019 is a little bit dated when you compare it against 2020, and obviously, 2021, I mean, again, it's dependent upon so many factors, but, I mean, one of the parts of the conversation we had, and you're going to get to this in a minute, was, you know, the coverage, you know, eight hours, 16 or 24, but that, you know, this chart, if I finally look at the one that's up there now, you know, you're looking from the hours from, you know, I guess 12:00 AM to, to 5:00 AM, and it's entirely green, but that wasn't the case, again, relative to the numbers that we saw for the first part of 2020. And so, again, you're not, you know, predicting, putting forth any particular argument here as far as your recommendation, but I just want to say that the concentration is still here, but there was, on either in the spectrum, a little more weight that went towards some of those areas, some of those, you know, early, early morning hours or late evening hours.
Right, agreed. Well, I'm sure Flo will let us know that we need to look at the full-year 2020 data when we come back in September.
Okay, well, again, if it's available, I know that, you know, people.
The sheriff is very good about that, and I'm sure that they will have that available if they don't already.
Okay, and the reason I make the point, though, is, you know, this is a picture in time. Obviously, this is 12 months reflected here. We had, you know, five months reflect, or six months reflected in, or a full five months reflected in the information the last time. So as we're having the conversation, which we'll get into budget, to resources, to how we design a program, I just think it's important for us to have as, as much current data as possible for the consideration this before this board, so.
Right, agreed.
Okay.
And I think having both 2019 and 2020 will be important. And the reason we showed this one is because this was a non-COVID year.
Yeah.
Now, whether that really impacted what happened on the graveyard shift is debatable.
That's fair. And I think to Supervisor Kennedy's point, too, again, you've now engaged with the police chiefs. I think if, if there's a way through their own dispatch and/or their own accounting for that, if there's data that they, you know, again, want to share and maybe using the same metrics if possible so that it's, you know, it's a, it's a fair addition to the chart, but I think that would be helpful as we're talking about this and, you know, you know, the weight of the impacts as far as numbers, and so whether it's the City of Sacramento or City of Belgro, City of Citrus Heights, pick your city, if they're, you know, if they're engaged and they have a way to, to pull that up, I think it would be useful for, because, again, the numbers will be relative, obviously, larger, but it may, but again, it may fill this chart out, or it may make it even a deeper, you know, hue of red or green in some of the areas. So I just, I think we could ask them, they've obviously asked of us to meet and be a part of the process. I think their contribution could be, if they could give us some of the data where they think, if they applied some of the same metrics that the sheriff did in, in calling out the data for our consideration, so.
We'll ask them for that.
Just offering that as a suggestion. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, just a brief comment on that. It seems to me that we might actually want to consider throwing out 2020 because the whole year, regardless of COVID, we also had a great deal of civil unrest.
That's true.
And I'd actually be more interested in looking back, maybe through five years, from 2014 through 2019. I think that's going to give us probably a better impression of what the actual quote-unquote "normal" year call dynamic is going to look like, because I, I mean, in a year where we're not just, when we not only had a pandemic, but we had other law enforcement agencies, including CHP, that was assisting local law enforcement during the summer of 2020. I mean, pick a year that didn't have the National Guard present. So it seems to me that 2020 in and of itself is probably extremely, you know, different than, than what a normal year would, would represent. I'm just, that's kind of a anecdotal assumption, but I think it's a safe one.
Well, your, your assumption is correct. We have seen some negative impacts from COVID-19 and people having to shelter in place for extended periods of time, kids not being in school, and the resultant problems from that, so I certainly agree. So we've talked briefly about the STAR program. It's in a limited service area in the City of Denver and only is in place from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and they handle about 3% of 911 calls, and they get all their calls through the 911 dispatch center. But what's interesting about them is from June of 2020 to November 2020, they received 748 calls, and only 313 were directly from 911. 260 were from Denver police officers out in the field who requested assistance. And this is something the police chiefs brought to our attention, that when an officer's on the scene and has a person in crisis, they haven't committed a crime to justify taking them to jail, they're not necessarily a threat to themselves or others, but they need some help. And so they call the STAR program mobile response teams, and I expect to see the same. Interestingly, 175 of those calls were self-initiated by a STAR unit that was already out in the field. A cahoot serves the Eugene-Springfield area, which has about 15% of Sacramento's population, so it's considerably smaller. It does operate 24/7, and its calls come through both the 911 phone number, and they have separate 10-digit phone numbers, one for Eugene, one for Springfield. The outside numbers from Eugene and Springfield flow into the 911 call center, the Central Lane County 911 Center. And the center answers 911 calls first, and if there's a backup of calls, the non-emergency calls get held until there's a dispatcher available. In Maricopa County, Maricopa is the largest county in Arizona and one of the largest in the country. The population is 4.6 million, so they're about three times our size, and they receive about 200,000 calls annually to their standalone call center. They also receive a number of calls from 911 dispatch, which we'll discuss in a minute, and they do cover the entire county of Maricopa. I want to talk to you about Crisis Now. This is something that we discovered as we looked and became available to us.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yes.
We do have a question about the last slide. Supervisor Desmond?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Jim. I'm sorry to interrupt you here, I just want to ask this because I'll, I'll forget if I don't.
Sure.
The, the STAR program and the cahoots program, I think you mentioned, at least cahoots, they have, also have, in addition to, to working with 911, they have a standalone number as well, correct? Do you know how many calls came into that standalone number?
No.
During this time period? Because I think, I think that would be important to, to note for both those programs, because I imagine they also get a lot of calls directly to that standalone number.
Oh, yes.
I would imagine. And then, kind of on the flip side, in Maricopa County, do you know, I mean, I know you have the stats for how many calls to the standalone center, but I imagine they also, you know, law enforcement or fire or whomever, that there's a mechanism to transfer a 911 call over to them. Do you know how many of those occur as part of this research?
I do for the City of Phoenix, and I'll show that in a moment.
Okay, terrific. And then, I just want to make one comment about the point you made as far as the number of, of calls that came in from officers out in the field. I mean, I could, I can, I can think of so many situations that I, I've been in the course of my career, in my prior career in the Highway Patrol, where it's very, very common to get called out to a scene where someone's running around in traffic and they're clearly exhibiting signs of, you know, mental illness. Well, you can't have a behavioral health person show up there and shut down traffic and shut down roadways and things like that, but it would have been great to have the opportunity to have someone come out to a scene like that after you get the scene kind of safe. And so I could certainly see many occasions where that would happen, you know, law enforcement working with these folks, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll count that as a yes vote for our mobile response teams. Okay, whoops, let me see, I wouldn't quite finish there. Crisis, no, I guess I was. So Crisis Now is sponsored and endorsed by the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. We were fortunate to find this group, it's an international consulting firm, and they developed the Crisis Now model, which has been implemented in a number of jurisdictions, and it is purely a non-law enforcement intervention for persons receiving, experiencing a behavioral health crisis. They were invited to California and funded by the California Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, and we have utilized RI International to inform our discussion to provide some background data and projection models. And yes, it is very nice to have an internationally recognized consultant working for us at no cost. Their service has been invaluable and given us insight into other jurisdictions that have successfully implemented an alternative 911, and most notably in Georgia and Maricopa County, Arizona, although they've also done it in the United Kingdom and Alaska. Much of this morning's presentation is based on the experience that has been seen in Maricopa So in Maricopa County, this is their total crisis calls that they received between December 2019 and December 2020, a little over 200,000 per year. And I focus on Maricopa County for a few reasons. One, they have a fully implemented program model. They're operating countywide in a large county in a western state, and they run a 24/7 program. All of these are factors we'd like to have here in Sacramento County. So these are the calls you act about, ask about being referred from 911 to the call center, and this is just for the City of Phoenix. And the City of Phoenix has almost exactly the same population as Sacramento County. We see in Maricopa County, they've got 38 different cities, including Phoenix, Mesa, Tempe, Scottsdale, so there's a lot of different jurisdictions. And the number of calls that are diverted from 911 to the Crisis Now network is about 450 a month or over 5,400 annually. And in our last hearing in February, you requested the ability to look at a comparison of annualized data. This does give you that for these two years in, in Phoenix, but it really isn't helpful for making projections or planning purposes, because if you look, you'll see the month of December was the lowest in 2019 and the highest in 2020. Similarly, March was the highest month in 2019 and the second lowest in 2020. So there's a great deal of variability and not a pattern that we could really look to for planning purposes. Going the other way, these are calls referred back from the crisis center to 911. And while some of these could be because there's a threat or danger, maybe a weapon present when a person calls in about a crisis situation, it's just as likely and perhaps more likely that someone's calling in because they found their loved one passed out on a bed with an empty bottle of sleeping pills next to them and needed paramedic response. Those automatically, we would move over to 911 for medical response. The average here is about four and a half, excuse me, .45%, which means about 900 calls annually, or about 75 a month. So the Crisis Now model has three factors, call center, a crisis response, and a facility. And we're looking at three different options, standalone, which is strongly recommended by the community, a 911 dispatch, which is favored by law enforcement, and a third option, two, clinicians co-located within a 911 dispatch center. Now, the, the use of a number other than 911 addresses the reluctance or even fear that many people have of calling law enforcement. This certainly has been voiced in our public forums, and you heard a, a strong voice at our last hearing advocating for a non-law enforcement number. 911 dispatch, you're very familiar with that, so I won't belabor that. Clinicians with 911, this approach could provide a closer collaboration between law enforcement and the clinicians. It's used in the City of Houston and in some jurisdictions in Georgia, while other call centers in Georgia have a standalone number. With 159 counties and 528 cities, you can understand why there might be a variation in Georgia. And I know Supervisor Kennedy, you want to ask me, why are there so many counties in Georgia? Well, the story is that the counties were formed so that a farmer with his mule team could go from his home to the courthouse and back in one day. That's the extent of the boundaries of those counties. Actually, a more likely scenario is back then, it was more of a electoral college-type system, and they wanted to make sure that the rural areas had greater representation than the cities.
Does that mean that San Bernardino has really fast horses, then?
They must, they must have. Okay. So some considerations about call centers. Many people have advocated for an easy-to-remember three-digit phone number for mental health crisis calls, and last time I was here, we didn't have any options for them. Well, 988 will become active nationally when the Federal Communications Commission turns the switch on July 1st of 2022. It's intended as a suicide prevention hotline and mental health crisis phone number, and states need to opt-in to this to adopt that. Within California, AB 988 is one piece of legislation that would do that. It's an active piece of legislation with multiple interest groups weighing in on possible changes. We're following a close We're following it closely, as it might have a significant impact on our planning. As originally written, it would mandate 911 adoption statewide as an alternative to 911. The fate of the legislation is unknown. I mean, since I submitted the board report, things have changed. It's undergoing a lot of discussion, and quite honestly, the last time we heard about it, it looked a lot different than what's written.
Excuse me, Supervisor Kennedy had a question.
Actually, it's just as much of a statement based upon this slide, because as we see here, it's federal 988 suicide prevention. And I still hold firmly, you know, having I had my mind changed, that a standalone number is still needed, and we can find a three-digit number. Now, if it's 988, fantastic. I don't care what it is, frankly. But, you know, 911's been around since 1968. It's going to take a while and aggressive media and public relations campaign to get it ingrained in people's minds that that's not who you call in this circumstance. Thus, why, you know, that to do a seamless transition is going to be difficult, but we're going to have to get in people's psyche that, so that we all know 911. I mean, we were, you know, well, some of us born, you know, doing 911, and understand what it is. But forget, to get people to really, just without thinking about it and knowing where to call, I do think that we have to segregate it and make it, you know, don't mix the message. That's number one. Number two is, we talked about the federal 988 Suicide Prevention Behavioral Health Emergency Response. When I first started talking about this during the budget, it was more than just the way I envisioned it and the way I had, when I had spoken to our health, many of our health partners, who, you know, they talked about the economies of scale and the efficiencies of having other things within this, you know, for example, the suicide prevention. One way to get to the suicide prevention hotline is called 211. Well, nobody knows that. But if we had a number that was out there that people said, "That's the number for mental health," they would know. That's who you call for suicide prevention. I mean, I think that, I'm hoping that we're not, now, I realize that these things have to be done incrementally, and that we have taxed our staff tremendously over the last 45 days or whatever with this, but I hope that we're going to look beyond just 911, you know, getting people out of the 911 system. And we're also going to look at how this can better serve all of the behavioral health needs of the community. Does that make sense?
Yes. Well, I want to be real clear that the department has not taken a position yet on what we want to do. And we understand your advocacy for 988, and we certainly understand the community's advocacy for 988. So it's certainly very strong in the mix.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at any rate, implementing legislation is being considered. There's also considerations of introducing different bills that might address this issue as well. But 988 is coming, and it will be impact, it will impact our planning and will be in effect July 1 of 2022. Now, if we do go down this route and use 988, that would require a lot of coordination with law enforcement, and we've talked to law enforcement about this. And I think what would have to happen is a meeting of the minds about what calls 988 would handle, what types would have to go to 911, and vice versa as well. And it would likely require MOUs with each of the city police departments on how we handle that. Now, if we implement a program using a standalone call center before July 1, 2022, thanks to David Villanueva and his staff, we have reserved the 10-digit number, Get Care is the name of it, if we want to implement a standalone center before 988 is in force.
Excuse me, I just want to say I like the idea of a three-digit number better, and Supervisor Serna has a comment.
Yes, sir.
Do you know, Jim, whether or not the state legislation has in it the authorization for the surcharge?
Yes.
Okay.
As originally written, it does.
Okay, all right.
Which provides some funding, which is, I mean, just like 911 is funded by a surcharge, at least partially funded by a 911 surcharge, the 988 would include a surcharge as well to help us fund call centers.
Thank you.
Mobile response teams. Using the Crisis Now model gives us a number of 12 or 13 teams. When we actually laid it out, shift by shift, our staff suggested 14 teams. We'll refine that when we come back in September. But using the 12 teams as a basis, we've developed our estimates. And these teams would be mental health professionals and peers with lived experience. And ideally, the peers would have lived experience with homelessness and a lot of the other issues that will be faced by the folks that are in crisis that will have to go out and respond to. The clinical supervision is something we hadn't discussed before, and in staffing our teams with mental health professionals, I think it's very important. When an employment candidate gets their Master of Social Work degree, they are eligible to be a mental health counselor. And hiring them right out of college, out of their, with their MSW, and training them for a couple of months in what we want them to do as part of the call center or mobile response team, will give them the tools they need to do to be successful out there. With the clinical supervision of senior mental health counselors who have their license, this will allow the mental health counselors to get the necessary experience under the clinical supervision to progress to be senior mental health counselors and to get their own licenses. This is really attractive to new graduates, and so it, I think, not only broadens our pool of eligible candidates, it gives them a better look at a career ladder within the county and what we would hope would be a long and successful career.
Supervisor Natoli had a question.
Yeah, thank you, Jim, for, I think, you know, pointing out what some of the career paths, but certainly some of the expertise that could come with the clinical model you described in the supervision. Did I hear you correctly? You said September? You come back to in September?
We're coming back with our proposal for implementation in the, what does Britt call it, the adjusted recommended budget, final budget hearings with an implementation plan.
I saw the adjusted recommended budget, but I wasn't, so it didn't say September. I saw that in the staff report. So, the reason I asked that is that then you come back with final recommendations, but just as we had the conversation a year ago, June, about, you know, roping off some money, came back in September, we roped off money, we obviously looked at an expanded approach here, then that would put implementation probably well into, and again, there are many moving parts here, so I want to just talk to the, to a specific part of this, but puts implementation well into 2020, 2022. I mean, time you hire up and if you're going to have the separate number and so forth. I mean, so from the time we've, you know, kind of initiated the conversation, and certainly with the, you know, the good work of colleague Supervisor Kennedy, you know, that's a two-year rollout, before you roll it out. So I guess, and I just wanted to, here's kind of, to answer my question, though. So is there the ability, again, if you have a framework and you know you're going to go, you know, whatever the final action is to, for hours and so forth, is there the ability to stand up some teams that could be available during some of the most critical hours and do that in advance of the entirety of the program? And, you know, you talked about a phased approach or a pilot program the last time we were in hearing on this. It just seems to me that that really drags this out, not intentionally, but I, but I, you know, I guess, so my question is, could you begin to stand up with some folks to actually be out in the field and start doing this now?
I think that's possible, Supervisor, but I also want to make a couple of points, too. Because as we've worked on this, we've all wanted to move as fast as possible on this, but we're not developing it in a vacuum, either. There are events that are happening, and I think we'd be ill-advised if we didn't consider what's happening at the statewide level, and the fact that we're going to have a statewide system in 2022, as well as what's happening at the federal level, which, as I said earlier, could significantly impact the funding of this proposal and allow us to consider things we might not be able to consider without that. The guidelines for that funding haven't even come out yet.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to, not sound defensive about it, but point out that we're not developing this on our own. There are surrounding events that we have to take into account, I think, but we can certainly look at what we can do in advance of, as you suggest, and certainly, if we can move faster on this, we will.
Yeah.
That's our desire.
But, no, no, it's clear, and I think, you know, from what was in the written report, what you, you know, certainly started with this morning, certainly what Jim's going through here, that it's not in a vacuum. But my point being is that, you know, we already set aside a million and a half for this budget year. We'll be into another budget year, we'll make decisions that may be of a significantly larger sum of money on a potentially ongoing basis with federal and/or state participation. But I guess, bringing it back to the question, and you in part answered it, is there the ability, if you're going to look at two-person teams, to start building your team? You know, you maybe use analogy about it, you draft some folks, and, you know, have them available, you know, even with the current 911 system, to begin to address issues, and again, if we're going to build this, you know, bigger, but you're going to have people that then would have some experience, you ought to have some protocols, I get it, but stand this up. Because otherwise, you're not going to stand it up, all things understood here about, you know, additional dollars and the costs and having protocols in place that are appropriate for response and proper referrals and all the things we've talked about and are still going to cover. But it seems to me that that's just a long time. Meanwhile, every day, day in and day out, mental health crises occur, and good or bad things can happen, I guess, so that's my point. And we understand that, and again, and it's not to push back on you or for the good work, and you've done some yeoman's work here just in the last five weeks, and I'm very appreciative, and I think the community is as well. I'm just...
No, point well taken. Yeah. Point well taken. We can certainly look at that and see what we might be able to do. Bear in mind also that we have our mobile crisis teams out there, too, that we're staffing up. And as we've heard before from Dr. Quist, there's been recruitment issues there, but he's working hard to get those fully operational, too. So we'd have those out there operating as this work is...
Well, and maybe part of that is to expand the hours. It's not, you know, mobile crisis team not being from, you know, eight to seven or whatever it is, hours, is to get a couple of teams that would be available on weekends, you know, maybe, you know, building off of that existing model, but to begin to have more presence when people need it. And again, you know, we've got this charted out, and, you know, whether you'd have 24/7, you know, coverage right out the chute, I don't know. But right now, we're still limited to mobile crisis teams. You don't, you know, they're not...
Right.
I forget what the hours are, but it's certainly not around the clock, so...
Right.
Or on weekends.
Yeah, we can look at that, certainly.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, where was I? I just want to talk just briefly about, again, those two-person teams. We believe that this combination of a clinician along with a peer embodies the kind of clinical skills and empathy that would be necessary to successfully deal with folks who experience a crisis. The call centers, using the algorithm developed by RI International for a county our size, we'd expect to see about 78,000 calls to a standby call center, a standalone call center, once the program is fully operational. And we use the experience of Maricopa County to develop this cost estimate. When we return to your board with a full implementation plan, we'll develop a detailed cost assessment with specific positions for your consideration and adoption. These numbers are presented to give you an idea, to give you a ballpark of what we're looking at right now. And of course, we can certainly look at your recommendation, Supervisor Natoli, to move forward in advance of September, see how we can work with our law enforcement partners to work out the details and perhaps getting those folks out there after normal hours or somehow supplement what we're doing now with the mobile crisis teams.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Jim, before you leave this slide, was this, I understand this is a pretty rough estimate, but is it based on like a common unit cost or cost per call, or how did you?
No, this was based on Maricopa County's actual costs.
Okay.
And of course, factored in for our size and the number of teams we'd have. And again, the 16 and 8-hour are based on the number of calls during those shifts. Startup costs would include the initial staff hiring and training prior to implementation, as well as operating costs during the hiring and training process and equipment. The equipment for a standalone call center would include one of those electronic geographic location functions similar to what we have in a 911 call center. That would allow the staff in the call center to see where the response teams are, what their status is, where calls originate, and other information, too, to help us be most effective. Of course, if a 911 call center option is adopted, that would not be needed. Mobile response costs, with 78,000 calls annually, it's projected that 12,300 field responses would occur. And the projected cost is based on the national suicide prevention hotlines experience. And once again, a detailed budget proposal will be presented to you in September based on what we believe we would actually need here. And again, as with the call center, the 16 and 8-hour estimates are just based on the call volume during those times.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah. Jim, in looking at the three models, here we have, our fire dispatch has a separate system. You get 911 and there's fire dispatch, and, you know, that's been designed, the county's been certainly integral to making sure that we had coverage throughout the county. When you call a fire department, obviously you're calling either for, you know, fire or another emergency incident where folks, you know, medical responders are responding. I guess I'm curious, do any of the models have any association with their first responders who, you know, paramedics, you know, have life support, responding certainly to accidents in the field? They respond, you know, roadways, homes, businesses, in all hours of the day and night. I'm just curious, as we look at this, and, you know, that's not, you know, it's not directly associated with law enforcement, but I'm just wondering with the fire response, and there's, you know, significant coordination on that, is there any opportunity to, you know, build off of that model? Because we have, you know, a separate dispatch system for fire, if I'm not mistaken, and it would just seem to me that there might be some ability to, you know, in framing this and looking at this, to talk with our, you know, emergency first responders on the fire side of the equation.
We'll look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to follow up on those comments. I agree with Supervisor Natoli. I've thought about this a lot. I mean, we're trying to characterize these calls. We want to put them more in the healthcare arena, right? This is an emergency behavioral health issue that they're responding to, these non-law enforcement teams. And I think that's a really great point that Supervisor Natoli makes. I mean, we have an existing system, we have an existing very close coordination between law enforcement. And in the state of California, just so you know, law enforcement is the public safety answering point for every 911 call in the state. Cell calls all go to Highway Patrol dispatch almost everywhere in the state, and then landlines go to, with some exceptions, go to the local police department public safety answering point, and then those calls are triaged, then they're transferred very frequently to either EMS or fire or whomever. If it's a non-emergency call, sometimes it's transferred to a non-emergency responder, depending on what that jurisdiction has set up. But I think that's a great point. And I, you know, I'm thinking, as Supervisor Natoli was talking about this, it seems to me, we could, even while you're still having the discussions with the chiefs of police and the other jurisdictions, and you're waiting to see how the state legislation shakes out, I'll take a quote from my colleague Supervisor Serna in the context of the Community Review Commission, you know, "Whatever we set up today, it doesn't mean that's going to be the permanent version of this." But it seems to me, we could get some teams on the ground pretty quickly and maybe just focus on just the unincorporated area, and maybe you just do it through the fire dispatch. So I just want to echo those comments that Supervisor Natoli made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
The third leg of the Crisis Now model is for a crisis center, someplace where we can take folks who are in crisis when they cannot resolve the situation in the field. And back in my day, in the good old days, the Mental Health Treatment Center was a place where police, ambulances could bring folks who are in crisis, 5150, whatever it may be, and have it handled. Well, budget reductions eliminated that program. What we have now is the Urgent Care Clinic, which operates from 10 to 10. To be truly responsive and provide the service that's needed, we would want to expand that to a 24... responsive and provides the service that's needed, we would want to expand that to 24/7. And that is a contracted function, and we would expand that contract by $3.5 million. And those costs are eligible for Medi-Cal funding at 50%. And we estimate that about 80% of the people that would show up there would be Medi-Cal eligible. So we'd see 40% federal financial participation, which was certainly help out. So there's lots of coordination and consultation, collaboration that needs to occur to implement this. And these are just some of the folks that we need to work with to make sure that every voice is heard and that while we're certainly not going to please everybody, we at least have to hear everybody's concerns and seriously consider them. We've had a number of groups that we hadn't talked with before come and ask to be included in the planning process. We'll do that. We want to make sure that people are heard and that we can use their imaginations, their innovative ideas, those people and organizations, to help us form the best possible program. And of course, it's imperative that we have a collaborative relationship with law enforcement, and will likely result in memorandums of understanding with the different law enforcement agencies in the county. And this happened since our last meeting, which is just fabulous news. The American Rescue Plan Act adds mental health crisis mobile response teams as an optional Medicaid program element. And the legislation specifies that it must include a behavioral health professional, one of our mental health counselors, and either a nurse, social worker, or a peer support specialist. I mean, it looks like this thing was written just for us. Well, the fact of the matter is, this good news can be attributed to Senator Ron Wyden of Oregon. He's chair of the Senate Finance Committee and a big fan of the cahoots program. So this was inserted in that legislation to help out cahoots and similar programs throughout the country. And while we would expect, as I said, about 80% of the folks we come in contact with to be Medi-Cal eligible, that would reduce the amount of revenue we get to about 68%. But that is a very healthy shot in the arm to fund the mobile crisis teams. And this is already written into the law and only needs to be adopted by the state of California as an optional service in their Medi-Cal plan. We understand that Department of Healthcare Services is already looking at this, and we will follow up with their director and through the statewide Behavioral Health Directors Association. So assuming your board approval of a program in September, these are the types of things that we are looking at, that we need to do to fully implement. And as you mentioned, that marketing and advertising campaign is key to getting people aware of whatever service we're going to operate. If it's a 911, 988, 988 and the 10-digit number, either one would require a massive public relations effort to get that number out there, get people used to it. And of course, that's very likely to be implemented by legislative actions and, quite frankly, by our administrative capacity to make things happen. The State Department of Healthcare Services has put forward the CalAim plan, and altogether is a very good comprehensive plan to improve services of Medi-Cal eligible persons in physical health, mental health. And we want it to be successful. There is one quirk in that plan, and that is that mental health clients, seriously mentally ill persons, are currently served in Sacramento and Solano Counties by Kaiser. And part of the CalAim proposal is to carve those folks out from Kaiser coverage and make them the responsibility of counties. Kaiser has done an analysis of their data, and for those individuals who they believe would be transferred to counties and require us to provide service, they estimated 11,000 for both counties, not 8,000 for Sacramento County. This is effective January 1, 2022. As you can imagine, assuming responsibility for 8,000 new seriously mentally ill patients is going to be a huge administrative task, both actually clinically as well as physically. And two big pieces of that is one, ensuring a stable transition for those patients, as well as expanding our capacity to serve them, which means request for proposal, analyzing, awarding, contracting, working with providers just to build the system. And those are not fast propositions. CalAim also changes our billing structure, clinical determinations, and really, for Sacramento and Solano County, upsets the apple cart. We are glad to serve these people. We think we'll be able to serve them well, but we need time and we need money to do that. The Assembly Health and Budget Subcommittee's have held hearings on this, and the members of the committee did express some reservations and had some very pertinent questions. And two, I was very glad to see. One was, does shifting the benefit back to the counties require state general fund backfill? And my answer to that is a resounding yes. And two, does the Department of Healthcare Services have a plan for continuity of care? That's a significant issue. And anytime you disrupt a treatment plan, to involuntarily transfer a patient from one provider to another is a traumatic event, and we really don't want to see that occur. We're working with State Department of Healthcare Services to see how we can more easily transition this. We've made it clear, we need adequate funding from them to ramp up our capacity to serve, and we want a nice plan for our soon-to-be patients to transition from their current provider to us. I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll have a positive resolution, but that remains to be seen. At the September budget hearings, we'll be returning to you with proposals for how we manage this transition. This has not been enacted yet, but every indication is that it will be. We are going to try and get a delay in implementation, but as it's written right now and planned, it would happen January 1 of 2022. So this is, you know, as you can imagine, a huge workload for our staff. So 2021, '22 will be a very interesting year. And while we're planning on all these things, we're still managing to care for 30,000 men, women, and children in Sacramento County, provide behavioral health services for them. So that concludes my presentation. What are your questions?
Supervisor Serna's queued up. I just want to ask, you keep referring to the budget hearings as September. We generally have them in June and true up in September. Is that the plan?
With this, the reason I mention September is because this legislation, it's not legislation, it's an administrative plan that's getting some legislative review. It would be implemented in July 1. And so we don't know how that's going to be implemented yet. We don't know the revenue stream that might be associated with that. We don't know the transition plan for patients, and probably won't until May or June. So that just wouldn't leave us time to bring you an implementation plan at the...
But we definitely have to be mindful of it.
Yep.
Yes, it could make the September budget hearings a little different than what you're used to.
I'm sorry, just so we're clear. When you say "the legislation," you're talking about AB 988? Or are you talking about...
AB 988 is a separate issue. This is not a legislative issue. The CalAim is a plan by the Department of Healthcare Services.
CalAim.
But if I may, Supervisor, in addition to CalAim, you do have the AB 988 discussion going on, which I'll come to ahead, probably around July-ish. And we also want to see how the federal guidelines roll out. But the point's been made by the board, looking at ways we can start something up perhaps earlier. But we're just cautious about going too far with a system that we might have to change. Although Supervisor Serna's point is well taken, that you can make adjustments. You just have to measure that.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for the presentation and being patient with us as we interrupted you several times. But you should be somewhat used to that by now.
He's a veteran.
One of the things that I haven't heard about, and I wonder if staff has given some thought to this, is the way I understand it is that we are now, we, the county, are now required to opt out of Laura's Law. And I know that we're doing some outreach around that. Seems to me that that might be an important part of this discussion, is whether or not, you know, we land with opting out or not, how that might be a complement or a particular tool and toolbox for our crisis coordinators to consider. I know that that's kind of a longer-term element of...
Not really.
Well, but I mean, it's not, it's something that is, involves the courts. And so in terms of providing our clients, our patients with different opportunities, in this case, under Laura's Law, you know, the benefits of conservatorship, what has staff really thought about the intersection of that consideration, which is something that we're going to have to decide here fairly quickly, and developing this new paradigm for crisis intervention?
Well, as I see it, it's a tool to be used for our mobile response teams. If that situation arises, that's one of the things they can rely, fall back on for treatment if necessary. I haven't considered it as part of our planning for this because of that, it's just one of those things that is a treatment option. If they're resistant to treatment, under the Laura's Law, we can compel treatment or use the threat of compulsion, if you will, to get them to agree to voluntary services. But I don't think it would really impact how we develop the program.
Okay. Can you give me an example of how that would work in a, you know, given like a particular incident, where we don't, we obviously don't have Laura's Law now. We do have CARES Plus, but, which is, some have called it Laura's Law Lite. But I just think it's a really critical part of this discussion that we haven't had any yet. And so I'd like to understand more how you see that, you know, as a tool in the field, given someone that's, you know, in crisis, and how that would work with a conservator and with the courts? And how does that become a short-term or medium-term benefit to the patient?
When a mobile crisis team responds in the field, hopefully the person in crisis agrees to voluntary treatment. And we can refer them to their care provider or take them to the urgent care center or clinic. If they do not agree to that, under current law, there's not a lot we can do about it. Under Laura's Law, if we opt into that, then we can discuss with them what the options are under Laura's Law, that we would like them to accept treatment. If they're resistant, explain to them that the process is for us to go to court to compel them to receive treatment. Oftentimes, that will get them to agree. If not, you're right, it's a longer-term process to actually get to court. And in that instance, wouldn't be a help in the field. But again, that's something that happens once we have the contact with the client. It's not something that happens in the call center. It's not something that's going to happen when we decide whether to dispatch. It's when we get out in the field and are actually face-to-face with a client to try and resolve the crisis that that becomes an issue. But we can certainly, I understand your concern, and we will include that in our discussions of how we move forward on this.
I just think it behooves us to consider simultaneously the prospect of not opting out as we develop this. And I think another important question to ask and have answered is whether or not there's anything relative to the cost of implementing Laura's Law, if that's what we decide to do as a county, that can be recoverable with the federal aid that you cited.
Sure. We'll take a look at that.
Because that also might be, while serendipitous, it might just be probably an optimal time for us to really consider not just the implementation of something new in terms of conservatorship, but doing it at minimal risk to our general fund.
You know, Supervisor, if you look at the Federal Relief Bill, there's a whole section on mental health provisions. So we will actively look at that because there could very well be an avenue there for us to get some federal funding.
Good. Yeah. Well, I'm hopeful that the next time we have a conversation about this in public, there's at least one slide on Laura's Law and what opportunities we have around that.
And I'd just like to kind of add to that. My understanding of Laura's Law is that there are, granted, there is judgment involved, but it's not a matter of someone just walking up and saying, "I think you look crazy. We think you need to be, we're going to take you to court." It's more a matter of there is a protocol if someone has had frequent incidents or is in a position of not being able to take care of themselves, and they don't have the ability to make that choice to get treatment. And so it's a, you know, I do think we need to look at the policy, and, because that will be an important consideration as we're deciding whether or not we want to take that on for Sacramento County, I think. It's not, I didn't think it was described the way you just described it, when they go out with that patient, they talk with that. One person doesn't do that. It's when someone becomes, you know, a burden to the system, they're having criminal activity, they're not able to take care of themselves, that it becomes, they fall into this situation of having to address the Laura's Law in court. So, I mean, I would like to understand the specifics around that policy and how we would implement it and pay for it also.
We'll bring that to you when we come back with that question of opting in or opting out.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
That was pretty comprehensive. I actually think it's getting better all the time.
It is. It really is.
It's exciting and a lot of good information, and I think it's going in a good direction. I know we've had a lot of questions along the way, and I know we have some public comment. And I believe we did have some off-agenda, "How do you want to do this? How should we do this? Can we take the off-agenda callers after this item? Or how should, that might be most appropriate? Or should we listen to them first?" Because we...
Well, you have seven off-agenda callers, and you have about 21 callers in queue for this item.
Okay. I think we should take the off-agenda, apologize to the board. We, I, I'm out of sorts this morning. The sun has, sunshine got to me, and I apologize to the callers, too. So let's take them first. They've been waiting patiently, and then we'll go to the callers on this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. And I apologize, I should have called that out before we called this item in.
Me, it's on me.
Please transfer the off-agenda callers first. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments, and you have two minutes. Could you please mute the meeting in the background? Caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Can you start with your comments?
I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel, the State Threat Fund LLC, to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto at Sacramento County of, who continue since last Friday to willfully, to conspire my willful mission to official duties for self-dealing, to engage in criminal fraudulent conspiracy operating de facto to defraud the public of honest service. Arrest and prosecute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller... Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Good day. This is a formal three day notice to perform or quit or be removed from office by bona fide encumbrance RE 384 951 957 US 00.57, effectuated this day, Tuesday, March 30, 2021, to institute immediate removal from office according to each county agent's willful forfeiture from office by concealment. The offices of the Board of Supervisors via President Sue Frost and the Office of the County Recorder via Donna Alred and her agents have continued to conspire in corrupt business practices in support of the ultra virus colorable criminal acts to obstruct justice and interfere in private commerce, as recognized restraint of trade used as a weapon to discriminate based on religious free will and to conceal public records by witness tampering. Sacramento County agents doing business as de facto Sacramento County of are given judicial notice that California statutes provide that an officer forfeits his office upon concealment of records or by bona fide encumbrance to prevent further violations and warring against California and the United States Constitution laws and the laws of the United States and the laws of this state, as well as the international treaties to engage in non-congressionally sanctioned acts of war against private protected civilians. The United States statutes at large mandate that whoever willfully and unlawfully conceals any record, paper, document, or other thing filed or deposited with any clerk or any public office is subject to fine or imprisonment and not more than three years or both. Whoever having the custody of any such record, document, paper, or other thing willfully and unlawfully conceals shall also forfeit his office and be disqualified from holding any office under the United States. And willful concealment of public records is a criminal act equivalent to an agent filing his or her resignation and immediate forfeiture from office and to be disqualified from holding any further office. And these are criminal acts reportable to the California Public, Anti-Public Corruptions Act commissions. And we will be filing complaints for each agent that continues to conceal these records through that agency to take care of this matter until it is...
Can you please wrap up your comments, ma'am?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hello. Good day. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as the Sacramento County, who continue since last Friday to willfully obstruct justice. The Clerk Recorder's Office sanctioned by the Office of County Council and the Office of Board of Supervisors as standardized corrupt practices, leverages of the Office of the County Recorder to subvert the currency reporting requirements of Subchapter 2, Chapter 53 of Title 31, United States Code, commonly referred to as the Bank Secrecy Act. These corrupt businesses practices have been used to enable contraband, smugglers, and other criminals to leverage the Office of the County Recorder to engage in counterfeit side-by-side base businesses to avoid regulatory oversight and to evade taxes. These willful criminal acts are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since Friday, March 26, 21, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hello?
Yes, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Good day. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of, who continue since last Friday to willfully, by acts of violence and without consent, force the practice of law by interpretation and conclusion. To prevent recordation of truths to facts to the official record, the Clerk Recorder's Office sanctioned by the Office of the County Council and the Office of the Board of Supervisors as a standardized corrupt practice denied the liberty to prevent using the office as conduit for the unlawful conversion of private exempt restricted cash items. This interpretation of the Limited Liability Company Act continues to allow chattel commercial secondary market counterfeit side-by-side collateral access devices used in fraud schemes by organized bulk cash smuggling enterprises. Concealment of records by these offices constitutes forfeiture from office while collecting a paycheck, an offense reportable to the California Fair Political Practices Commission. These willful criminal acts are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since Friday, March 26, 2021. The international transportation into or out of the United States through the Sacramento County Building as Sacramento County of trafficking in large amount monetary instruments in manners designed to circumvent the mandatory reporting provisions of Subchapter 2 of Chapter 53 of Title 31, United States Code is equivalent of and creates the same harm as the smuggling of goods. These willful criminal acts are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since Friday, March 26, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hello?
Yes, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Oh, good day. My name is Vernita Kendall. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of, who continue since, I mean, sorry, the Clerk Recorder's Office sanctioned by the Office of the City, I mean, County Council and Board of Supervisors as a standardized corrupt practice, leverages the Office of the County Recorder to subvert the currency reporting requirements of Subchapter 2, Chapter 53 of Title 31, United States Code, commonly referred to as the Bank Secrecy Act. These corrupt business practices have been used to enable contraband, smugglers, and other criminals to leverage the Office of the County Recorder to engage in counterfeit side-by-side base businesses to avoid regulatory oversight and to evade taxes. These willful criminal acts are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since Friday, March 26, 2021.
Are you, are you done with your statement, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Yes, I can start now?
Yes, please.
Okay, good day. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to condemn willful criminal acts that are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since Friday, March 26, 2021. Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of continue since last Friday to willfully interfere in private business and engage in corrupt practices reportable to the California Fair Political Practices Commission for willful omission to official duties for self-dealing, to engage in criminal fraudulent conspiracy, to deny recording truths related to smuggling operations taking place through the Office of the County Recorder. The intentional transportation into or out of the United States through the Sacramento County Building as Sacramento County of trafficking in large amount monetary instruments in manners designed to circumvent the mandatory reporting provisions of Subchapter 2 of Chapter 63 of Title 31, United States Code is the equivalent of and creates the same harm as the smuggling of goods. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good day. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of, who continue since last Friday to willfully interfere in private business and engage in corrupt practices reportable to the California Fair Political Practices Commission for willful omission to official duties for self-dealing, to engage in criminal fraudulent conspiracy, to deny recording truths related to smuggling operations taking place through the Office of the County Recorder. The intentional transportation into or out of the United States through the Sacramento County Building as Sacramento County of trafficking in large amount monetary instruments in manners designed to circumvent the mandatory reporting provisions of Subchapter 2 of Chapter 53 of Title 31, United States Code is the equivalent of and creates the same harm as the smuggling of goods. These willful criminal acts are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since Friday, March 26, 2021. Good day.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Good day, thanks for letting me talk. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to accept the forfeiture from office and to abate Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of. That continue since last Friday to willfully interfere in private business and engage in corrupt practices reportable to the California Fair Political Practices Commission for taking wages after forfeiture from office. Upon the decision to conspire and willfully obstruct justice for self-dealing, to engage in criminal fraudulent conspiracy, to deny recordings under the color of authority, the acts equivalent each participant agent filling his or her resignation, immediately forfeiture from office and disqualification from holding any office under the United States, cost schedule billable at a rate of $100,000 per day per agent for each offense against a member. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day. I'm calling from the Body Politics House of Yahweh, Israel Estate Thrift Funds LLC to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of, who continue since last Friday to willfully discriminate based on national origin or religious free will, which is a war crime punishable under treaty, by depriving private civilians the liberty to record pursuant to California Limited Liability Company Act. These willful criminal acts are subject to cost schedule assessment and invoice at $100,000 per agent per day by every minister impacted since last Friday, March 26, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please transfer the last caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Yes, as a Sacramento County resident, I've been following along to most of the Board of Supervisors meetings and the agenda items. I have a serious question and concern that I'd like to hear from each Board of Supervisor member of, at what point do we prioritize racial and gender equity against all of these initiatives that we're talking about? Seeing that we have such a grave disparity on the racial impacts and the health impacts of so many of our folks of color in our communities that are disadvantaged and also low income, how are we prioritizing that the service metrics and the quality of service is assured for every level of that? I haven't heard anything in some of the proposals we've already heard today that's referencing that. And then also, where does the accountability and oversight come into for those conversations that happen? Where is it measurable at? I know behavioral health is going through a racial equity conversation, but that's just one department in a county that serves millions. I think we need to seriously consider that as we afford in these discussions to lift up that question, and where does this exist to the community voice as well as all the stakeholders present? Typically, in county systems, I'm seeing a repeated level of prioritization of law enforcement or county officials over those who are directly being served. And because it happens at such a high level, there's a gap in understanding of what's truly needed and how that's truly reflected in the services that are carried out. If we don't prioritize these types of options in looking at how do we measure and really dive into the racial equity conversation for every level of service, law enforcement, behavioral health, mental health, social services, then we're going to continue to fail the resonance. I urge, and urge, and urge each Board of Supervisor to lift this question up as we're thinking about the alternatives to 911 and every other item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then please transfer the callers for item one.
I'm going to have to jump off, I'm way behind.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Karine McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist. I own and operate a private practice in District 3, and I'm a resident of District 2. I'm part of the Mobilize for Mental Health Coalition, a group of 25 health professionals, community members, and social justice organizations that are advocating for an alternative to 911 response program for mental health crises and quality of life calls that does not involve law enforcement. The Board of Supervisors asked the community what it wanted from a 911 alternative, and it got a loud and clear answer. In fact, over 520 community members have signed on to a petition issuing the following demands: that this program operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week; that this program does not use funds from under-equipped health department budgets; that this program have an independent advisory board consisting of community members who are the real stakeholders; and that they have trained and experienced mental health professionals supporting peer specialists as the first responders to these crisis calls. Under the current plan being proposed, although it seems to lean heavily towards the 24/7 service delivery model, it's counting on using federal COVID dollars and it's hoping to use proposed state funding that if approved would not even be available until July 2022? We can't afford to wait, and we can't pretend that 2020 didn't exist and won't have long-lasting negative impacts on people's mental health. With mental health distress on the rise due to COVID-19 pandemic, this response program is needed now more than ever. Under the current plan, there's an absence of an independent advisory board. In fact, the current plan seems to take most of its direction from law enforcement and an international consulting organization? We aren't reinventing the wheel here. And the county's planning to use less qualified mental health professionals? Not only is this a potential liability for the county as it's employing professionals with not much real-world clinical experience to crisis calls, but it's also providing substandard care to those most at risk of marginalizing.
Can you please wrap up your comments, ma'am?
Yep, just a few more sentences. In my mind, this is reckless practice as it's equivalent to having interns perform surgery unaccompanied. We need trained and experienced professionals. Also, Sacramento County and Maricopa County have very different racial demographics. Didn't the Board just declare racism on public health crisis?
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
I implore the Board to delay voting on this matter.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Thank you. This is...
Thank you. This is Dr. Dora Lee Grindler-Katona. I'm calling to support the proposal for a 24/7 police-free crisis hotline and mental health resources program. In my opinion, this is an extraordinary project that addresses the unfortunate statistic that 1 in 4 people shot and killed by police have mental illness. This is a sophisticated program that would provide 24/7, 365 days a year services for the Sacramento community that would intervene with skills to de-escalate conflict and communicate respect and trauma-based psychological skills to assess the help that is needed. It is a better solution than sustaining the methods offered by the Police Department. I urge you to vote in favor of this proposal and offer your trust in the Black community who are sincerely and carefully trying to find much-needed healing interventions for people in crisis. Thank you for listening. This is Dr. Dora Lee Grindler-Katona.
Thank you, doctor.
Please send the next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Caller, can you hear me? Hi caller, can you hear me? Okay. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
PJ, District 1. I'm concerned that it appears that MH1 was in contact, but special priority was given to police chiefs when the community is literally asking for removal of police from the process. You explicitly call police out for contact. Do you understand how you make folks crazy? Do you even have a fraction of a percent of introspection as to how this looks from the outside? One of the vestiges of white supremacy is bypassing those who have been doing the work if they happen to be women or minorities, saying, "I am a white man with a white and primarily male power structure who knows how to do what you're doing, and I know how to do it better," despite not having done it, despite women and minorities literally having to create systems to help the marginalized because of the lack of proactive support from the city and the county. You do this when you walk past MH1 volunteers who have been doing this work for over a year, who fills a void, and you pronounce "me." I know how to do this better. I am the one who can do this. I don't need subject matter experts. I intrinsically have the knowledge needed to solve this. I am concerned that this comes along with a seeming lack of understanding of how police negatively impact tense situations, how just their presence, even if they were good at de-escalating, can immediately escalate a situation. I'm concerned because you see the data on mental health interactions being deadly with police. I'm concerned because you see the lack of any necessary police involvement. It's star and cahoots, and you effectively announce that you see no way forward without police involvement. Listen to the subject matter experts. Listen to the community. Listen to the freaking statistics. We need experts with years of experience in mental health. We need them to make the call on what they can or cannot de-escalate before some dipshit with a gun goes and kills someone because he perceived a hand movement or head nod as threatening. Having police on mental health calls makes about as much sense as having them oversee a pilot flying a plane. They don't know the controls. They don't know what fixes any problem being experienced, and their intuition and training teach them to perceive a threat and shoot first. How many people will be dead at the hands of police while we wait for the state implementation? We need this now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi. My name is Joseph. First, I want to commend the Board for voting against the jail expansion recently. And I want to, I think we need to leverage that move and encourage the continuation of not using law enforcement for mental health services. As more calls are diverted from law enforcement, we will see less need for sheriff's work and for law enforcement response, and therefore, we don't need as much money going to their department. And more money should be used from their funds to fund the alternative 911 services and not money from the public health services. I'm also concerned that the sheriffs are overly involved. I believe one of your speakers said it is imperative to have law enforcement or sheriff as they create this model, but was less certain of the need for community involvement. And I think it's imperative that we have community involvement and listen to the Black and Brown communities that are most affected by law enforcement. And so, I just want to make sure that those communities are being listened to throughout this process. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yeah.
Can you mute the meeting in the background while you're talking?
Just do it.
Thanks. Okay. You can start with your comments now, please.
Yes. Good day. My calling is Dr. Yah Israel. Speaking on the behalf of the Commonwealth of Yahweh House of Yah Israel. First, I must edify all that the Reserve District Bank City of Sacramento County is non-contaminous with California State. So, we are to explore funding options, determine if program impacts consent decree, and to look into federal legislative efforts is simple. Upon a consent decree delivered by an individual state adult entity and US person, a man, female and male, human capital stock certificate of participation or beneficial interest share in our common community from the people that shall be decentralized and individual receipts, which are always acknowledged for valuable consideration paid, are to be centralized, with record of any security interest transaction to be recorded on the individual registrar state file number. Therefore, law or law or any other body politic law only deals with persons of unsound mind, but has no effect on man with dominion not in person considered in rem and engrossed annex to men municipal city of a county which is a legal person of executives and administrators for man private property, which is also known as commercial paper or chattel paper property. So, by definition, health is a sound state of mind that ought not be divided by any department or division of health, separating one sound state of mind. And I yield, have a good day.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can you start with your comments? You have two minutes.
Law enforcement does not need, law enforcement does not, I repeat, does not need to be involved in this program. This program is needed because law enforcement kills people, kills community members suffering from mental health crisis, kills community members for so many reasons that they don't need to be dead. Get law enforcement as far away from this as possible. They will only dilute the effectiveness, cause trauma, and death, as they are not equipped with the knowledge, tools, skills, education, wherewithal, humanity, or common sense to handle these situations, as we have seen from the deaths of 1 in 4. Sacramento sheriffs' statistics are abhorrent. Get law enforcement away from this. Listen to the people. Listen to your constituents.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, hello. My name is Brianna, and I would just like to say that we, the people, have witnessed time after time how the police have murdered civilians when encountering them in terms of mental health. I think that it's not a lot to ask that we take off some of their workload to prevent some of these deaths by investing into mental health. Considering that when they do murder people with mental health issues and stuff like that, and these cases get settled out through these families, the people are held accountable for these deaths because we're the ones paying for them, not the police. With a $4 million surplus, I think that it's wise for SACPD to allow us to open up another organization in regards to mental health, to 1, take off some of their workload, to 2, prevent some deaths, and for 3, to put this type of job in the hands of someone more capable. Police are not mental health specialists. They have no business handling people with mental health issues or mental health crisis. And I think we could prevent a lot of innocent people going to jail and a lot of innocent deaths if we could just put the money where it goes. Seeing as how they keep asking for more money with the $4 million surplus, I don't see why it's even a question to do this, but I think the more we get pushed back on this from you guys, the more we start questioning everyone in city council. We just want to live, and we want people to live. We're people who really care about people. And if they can't protect and serve everyone, then perhaps they shouldn't be in control of certain issues. And so, I think that they should invest that money somewhere else. It should be reallocated in something else. I don't think that the police should still be able to keep that money and retain that money that they're not using to do a job they don't do well, in a job they can't handle clearly. We want to live. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stevie Cook, and I'm a resident of District 1. I'm reaching out today to let you know that I support the Board of Supervisor's decision to fund a 911 alternatives program for community members experiencing mental health crises that is completely independent of any law enforcement influence. This governing body is moving in the right direction by seeking more depth from staff on this type of programming. Hold on, effect baby, hold on. I urge you to not get distracted. This 911 alternative programming must remain independent of the sheriff. I repeat, 911 alternatives must be independent of law enforcement, which means there must be a separate XXX number staffed by experts in mental health, not staffed by those pipelining people into incarceration. Concerned and caring members of the public need to know they can reach out with ease for expert assistance from trained counselors, therapists, and other health workers who are going to de-escalate rather than incarcerate neighbors who are going through complex emotional and physical hardships. This new number could literally be a lifeline. Teams of knowledgeable mental health experts paired with peers must be the point of first contact for mental health crisis response. Additionally, this program will not be robust and effective unless you fully fund it as a 24/7, 365 budget item. The $15 million being advocated for by the frontline emergency volunteers who've been on the ground doing this work is the minimum amount that should be allotted, considering it's a tiny slice of the horrendous legal fees county law enforcement officers already cost our community. Members of the Board, you have the opportunity here to make this a successful and permanent outreach asset in our county, not just a performative trial. As you have heard many times before from your constituents, your budget is your value, so fund 911 alternatives from a reallocated law enforcement budget. Take a stand against the old guard punitive ways, and you will be truly visionary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes. My name is Kula Konig, and I'm a resident of District 3, Rich Desmond's district. Regarding this item, I just want to say that echoing what the last caller said, alternatives to 911 mean something that is without law enforcement involved, because an alternative is something different. So, law enforcement should not have their hands in this. I would request that one of the supervisors, so my supervisor, Rich Desmond, to see how the alternatives to 911 community feedback sessions and all the hundreds of public comment were taken into consideration when this proposal was developed, because I'm not seeing it. So, I just want to make sure that all the time that people put in to go to those sessions that Bruce Waxstaff staff were not taken in vain. So, Supervisor Desmond, please ask to see that. We also need a champion or fighter for this, because this is going against the grain, and the passive resistance is not going to get us there. So Supervisor Natoli, thank you once again for asking the great questions. You will be missed when you retire. And I keep thinking about the last meeting, I think it was the end of February, when staff brought this up, and we were like, okay, let's make this happen. And then it said, okay, well, actually, let's go back and do some more research and see what happens if we have 8, 16, and 24 hours, even though you've been working on it in September. And I was like, Washington is done. So now, staff is like, Bruce is like, okay, we can go back and look at that regarding some of the points that Supervisor Natoli brought up. Like, why are we slow-walking this? That's what bothers me about all of this, is when proposals are pushed forward, it's the floor. And that's what we keep pushing, and then we have to keep pushing from meeting to meeting to get more, just like the Community Review Commission. Again, you propose a floor, and then we have to keep pushing for more. Why not the reverse? As a citizen of Sacramento, I'm frustrated that there's a lack of urgency on these issues. Who tells staff that something is urgent? Let's get it done. It's the slow-walking for me, and it needs to stop because people are dying. I know that government can move when they want to. I'm reminded of recently when we had the storms and the severe weather, and at first the city of Sacramento was saying, "We can't do anything. We don't have the money."
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
And there was uproar. Sure, I'm almost done. After people died and there was uproar, all of a sudden, we have shelters open 24/7. So, it's just about priorities, and it will also be a slap in the face if the money to fund this does not come from law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning. Yes. I'm calling this morning, and I'm excited to hear that it sounds like this is going to be moving forward, but I just wanted to say that I understand the desire to maintain the safety of publicly funded employees, but I think it's just as important to maintain the safety of the public. And I wanted to add that the House of Representatives did just pass an act on March 3 that would end qualified immunity for police officers, among other things. So, there is a change coming in the way that our society is going to be engaged, and we should not be investing $405.8 million of a $2.78 billion budget to criminalizing our citizens. So, I'm really looking forward to this program moving forward and to the county supporting it to engage the full county and not just the unincorporated or certain parts of the county. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, and you have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Susan Gallagher, and I'm the Executive Director of Cal Voices. While we overwhelmingly support alternatives to 911 responders, we struggle to support this program in its current form for the following reasons. It appears obvious that the program will eventually utilize MHSA funds, yet the program was developed outside of the community planning process and behind closed doors. There was no vetting of the creation of the Alternatives to 911 program or the development of the Behavioral Health Peer Specialist classification which accompanies it before either the MHSA Steering Committee or the Mental Health Advisory Board. You state clearly that it's a mental health response team, but yet, the mental health community is really absent from any of the discussions. This violates the Well-Purposed Institution Code related to the use of MHSA funds, as there are very clear standards that must be followed in order to fund any program with MHSA funds. Even after listening to all the comments today, I still don't see how this program is going to be funded, and it's really unclear. And it's not something that you go back and shoehorn into a public process after you guys have created a program behind closed doors. The public has a right to know about this program. A lot of work has gone on since September, and yet, it still hasn't been brought to the public. I also wanted to mention that there is legislation for a 988 line, which could assist with some of the funding, but you still need a match, and that match most likely will be realignment or MHSA funding. Either way, it's got to go through the MHSA process or the Mental Health Advisory Board. Both of those things are what we have in place in the mental health community, and neither has been consulted about this program. Number 2, individuals who have personally experienced a mental health crisis only represent 25% of all listening session participants. Additionally, participant demographics reflect substantial underrepresentation of various communities of color who really need this program desperately, as you've heard today. The community has been crying out to defund a portion of law enforcement's budget in order to create this program. Yet, you don't even talk about the funding, but we all know that it's not going to be law enforcement funding. In fact, you really wanted to defund our advocacy program that has been in operation for 27 years in order to fund the Behavioral Health Peer Specialists, all again outside of the public view. Is Sacramento County going to open the front door to crisis services?
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah. Yes, if this program is going to take place, it needs to have a front door. The Mental Health Treatment Center hasn't taken any clients since COVID started. It is not accessible by the front door, and even though Mr. Hunt mentioned budget cuts to it, we still give it $30 million a year. $30 million a year and it's not accessible by the public. There needs to be shared power in decision-making and development.
Thank you. Please send the next caller.
My name is Usam Mukaddam, and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Manager for the Sacramento Valley Chapter of the Council on American Islamic Relations. I'm here today to speak on Agenda Item 1, emphasize the many concerns that have been voiced as it relates to emergency response by law enforcement, and urge the County Board of Supervisors to reallocate funding from the sheriff's budget surplus in order to increase the proposed program budget to $15 million. We have seen the level of community response over the past year as it relates to implementing community-led emergency programs. Even the Sheriff's Department publicly expressed that it isn't well-equipped to adequately handle emergency situations that involve people who are suffering from a mental health crisis. It's critical that we shift that responsibility in conjunction with the funding that has been allocated to the Sheriff's Department to handle those situations into community-led programs. Similarly, these community-led emergency response programs should operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When talking about emergency services, especially as they relate to mental health crises, we should equip our county with the funds and necessary resources to offer these services around the clock. Again, I urge you to support the proposed community-led 24/7 mental health crisis response system and include it in the county's fiscal budget for the 2021, 2022 calendar year with an increase in allocation from $1.5 million to $15 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Tembo, and I am calling to demand that we seek funding for mental health alternatives, and that we take that funding from the sheriff's budget so that we can prevent more lives being taken. Hello, today that we've muted. In order to avoid more murders at the hands of the police, such as the shooting of Adam Lund, Gabby Navarez, also Maurice Holly, and many others, and it puts families in the position to have to decide to call for help at the possibility of their family members being murdered at the hands of police. Currently, there are no other alternatives, and it is completely negligent of the city and the county to not fund mental health alternatives from the police budget, considering that they murder people that need help, considering that the community is then left to pay the price, the cost for the settlement of these murders, while the police still roam our streets and are not equipped to be able to deal with mental health crises or people in need. It is definitely the city and the county's responsibility to be sure that families have other alternatives, and that we are not in a position to wonder if the lives of our loved ones are going to be taken when we need help for them. It is negligent and it is disgusting that we are still talking about this, years after people have been killed repeatedly, after we have substantial proof that the police are not equipped to handle this, years after we have substantial proof that there is other alternatives and things that are more effective for our community. I urge you to do the right thing and to be respectful and to be an example. We are the capital of this state. We make laws, we influence cities everywhere.
Can you please wrap up your comments, ma'am?
Yes, yes, do the right thing. It is our responsibility, it is an insult to the community to not fund it out of the police budget or out of the sheriff's budget. This needs to be mended down, and there should not be any other excuses.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Celeste, and I am a community member from District One. And it was brought up earlier in the meeting, but I think it's really crucial, and there's been a lack of discussion around wraparound services. We really need to consider what leads to crisis, a lack of mental health services, but also a lack of access to things such as food and housing, which are conditions that can exacerbate mental health issues. I think it's also important to view this mobile crisis unit as a link, but it's also important to consider what we're linking to. We know that mental health services are inadequate, which is why we're here having this conversation. And I think a 911 alternative necessarily involves creating and sustaining robust mental health programs. I'm also concerned that the plan as it stands does still heavily involve law enforcement, which is something that the community has called for time and time again, for less law enforcement involvement. And also Laura's Law was brought up during this meeting, which seems like it is a consideration, but also a consideration that would enhance that law enforcement involvement and also the involvement of the carceral state. And the community is really looking to avoid, obviously, the interference of law enforcement and to also avoid compulsory enforced mental health treatment, which has a history of carceral state interaction. We're looking to expand access, not to control behavior and force treatment. I also think it's important to consider that preventing and interrupting crisis is actually cheaper in the long term than criminalizing crisis. So considering these alternatives is a great step forward, but we also need to base these interventions in intentionally decriminalizing mental health crisis. I'd also like to uplift the demands of our local community organizations, a sustainable 24/7 program, not a pilot, at least the $4 million sheriff surplus to fund these programs.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, an independent advisory board involving key stakeholders. And I also would like to mention to the board that we sit here and debate about money, but I think it's important to consider the value of human life and also the value of the human lives of the folks lost to inappropriate police responses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, I'm calling from County District One with Sacramento Act. As one of your constituents, I appreciate that you are all eager to consider this much-needed program. As elected officials, we hold you to a higher standard and expect you to set community programs up for success. This means expanding the program to operate 24/7 with an independent advisory board and increased funding pooled from the sheriff's budget. I also challenge you to shift your perspective regarding law enforcement's involvement in this program. I know many of you are concerned with the aspect of safety, should police not be involved? I ask you to instead think about the aspects of danger, should police actually be involved? We have seen so many of our community members murdered by Sacramento law enforcement. "Are you asking for the same sheriff officers who in response to a mental health call stated, 'There's some nut tweak just freaking out, if you see him, hit him with a baseball bat a couple of times.'" That's a quote from a Sacramento sheriff officer. If you push for law enforcement involvement and they kill another one of our community members, how will you feel then, knowing that you pushed for this? You can prevent another tragedy by listening to the alternatives that community is providing. Approving this lackluster proposal will be ignoring the voices of those who are most vulnerable and impacted by this issue, as well as the hundreds of public comments and petition signatures. Again, to echo earlier comments, alternative means no law enforcement. Say their names: Justin Presspot, Maurice Holly, Wallace Jory, Daisy On Flano, Gabby Navarez, Adam Lund, Robert Coleman, Mike McIntyre, Daryl Richards, Joseph Mann, Jordan Zenta. Supervisors, I am asking that you don't add another name to this list. Go look outside your office and see the pictures our children have drawn about what makes them feel safe. Look at how they drew families, communities, not guns and cops. Daryl Richards was a child, a child experiencing a mental health crisis. Don't put any more of our children at risk, please. Again, we desperately need this program, but we need it done right. I encourage the board members to vote with your morals today. You have an opportunity to save lives. At the very least, please consider this community input and delay voting on this matter. Your constituents are watching and expecting you to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have... Can you mute the meeting in the background, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead and start now. You have two minutes.
Green County Board of Supervisors calling in from District One, and I just want to raise a key question that I'm getting from this presentation. Why are Jim Hunt and DHS staff taking any cues on 911 alternatives from deep-red states like Arizona, Texas, and Georgia? You know, it seems like, I really appreciate several supervisors, Natoli, Serna, and Kennedy, standing up and asking the critical questions that need to be asked of staff presentations right now, because it seems like they're completely reinventing the wheel from the Kahoots and Star model that's been discussed for the past six months, all for the sake of basically catering to law enforcement's feelings to allow them to retain significant input and control over this process. So I want to spell this out loud and clear. Fuck law enforcement's feelings. We need, quit putting cost savings over community needs. We need people to actually stand up and demand a 24/7 program that is comprehensive to what community needs, not what law enforcement wants. We do not need sheriff or city's police advice on how to develop a 911 alternative for mental health crisis. We need an independent advisory board, such as Mental Health Advisory Board or the PHAB Board, to review and advise the program's development. We do not need mental health specialists to co-locate within police-controlled dispatch centers. We need an independent phone number and call center until 988 is funded. Police don't heal us, they kill us. Law enforcement created this crisis, so we can't depend upon them to fix it. No 911 dispatch, no officer involvement. We need this board to demand a program led by peers with the support of clinicians, not the other way around. Heart attacks don't wait until 9:00 AM, nor do mental health crises. We need this program be funded 24/7. And most importantly, we need more than just $10 million to really put this program into perspective. $10 million is pennies compared to the hundreds of millions of dollars that we already put into the sheriff's department.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
And we also add into the lawsuits that we pay because they do not know or even care to know how to respond humanely or compassionately to mental health crises. We need this program be fully funded, and there's plenty of money to do it. That money isn't the issue. You know where to take it from. It can come from the sheriff, it can come from the construction contract around the jail expansion. There are plenty of places you can bring it from.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Thank you. I appreciate you all asking the critical questions that are necessary.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Can you hear me? Caller, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead and start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Cook, and I am the Director of Advocacy for Access California, and I have two comments. One, I'd like to take off my formal hat and just address you as a concerned citizen. I have not been tuning in to these meetings, and to see Sheriff Ross not wearing a mask is incredibly disheartening as an individual who lost a very dear loved one, my children lost their grandmother due to COVID. We hold you to a higher standard and for you to not be role modeling for community. Just no words. Please wear a mask, save lives, and set an example. Also, I wanted to address the conversation around AOT. Under this law, counties are required to divert critical mental health resources to AOT programs regardless of the actual community needs and to spite the unprecedented challenges they face from COVID. AOT is antithetical to the recovery model and prioritizes the Very Fail First approach California voters rejected when we passed MHSA in '04. I know this wasn't on the agenda, I don't believe that we should even be talking about it, but because it was brought up, I felt compelled to let you know that we recommend that you opt out additionally. Currently, Sacramento has no front door for law enforcement, and waiting times for outpatient services are 45 days, so it takes away local county control to divert funds to what we feel are the most pressing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Hello, can you mute the meeting in the background?
Yes.
Thanks. You have two minutes. Please start with your comments.
Okay. Hello, my name is Meg White, and I am with District One with Phil Serna. I own a business and a home in this district, and I, as well as all of my other black, brown, and poor community members, deserve a 911 emergency response alternative that we can actually rely on for mental health crisis and quality-of-life calls. I'm really frustrated that my local politicians are valuing the feelings of law enforcement over the needs of the community. The plan the city has brought back is completely unacceptable and does not reflect the needs of the community. There are plenty of things for the sheriff to do outside of mental health crisis and quality-of-life calls. The SAC sheriff in particular is 50% more violent than any other sheriff in the state, and suffering from a mental health crisis makes you 16 times more likely to be murdered by the sheriff or by law enforcement. Scott Jones has already stated he'd like to get out of the homeless response business completely, and taxpayers are paying millions of dollars in wrongful death suits every year because of murders done by the sheriff during mental health crisis. Programs like Kahoots and Denver Star, as well as Mental Health First Oakland, are already saving money and lives. I cannot for the life of me understand why law enforcement and the Board of Supervisors wouldn't be more than happy to meet the demands of the community that's been echoed by the Mobil Eyes for Mental Health Coalition. We need a 24/7 program. We need something fully funded with $14 million coming from the sheriff's surplus, as well as what's not going to be used on the jail expansion. We need no law enforcement involvement, as well as an independent advisory board. The city is so out of touch with their needs. I would like them to reach out to Mental Health First, Dr. Seiko, as well as the Homeless Union, and for the board to do the right thing to take two more weeks and come back with a program that actually reflects the demands of the community. The police being involved here inherently makes this not an alternative by definition. It's time to stop criminalizing mental health emergencies, save money, and save lives by allowing mental health professionals to handle mental health emergencies. I'd like to use the rest of my time to uplift the names...
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, absolutely, of the people who have been murdered during a mental health crisis by law enforcement, like Adam Lund, Gabby Navarez, Michelle Shirley, Maurice Holly, Justin Presscar, Walter Jolery, Robert Coleman, Daryl Richards, Joseph Mann, and Elijah McLean. Thank you, and please...
Sorry about that. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
My name is Cindy McCullough. I'm a board-certified behavior analyst, and I own a behavioral healthcare clinic serving residents of Sacramento County. I'm writing today, or calling today, to request that the Board of Supervisors vote to support fully funding of a 24/7 mental healthcare alternative to 911 that does not involve police. I primarily service members of the community that are significantly impacted by autism-spectrum disorder. Many of my patients are non-verbal and oftentimes are unable to follow one-step verbal directions, making encounters with law enforcement extremely dangerous. We've had patients go AWOL from their homes throughout the years, engage in very dangerous self-injurious behaviors that resulted in concussions and contusions and other bodily injury, and engage in huge meltdown behaviors in public places because their senses have just become overloaded. In each of these instances, the families that I served are absolutely terrified to call the police, especially my families of color. Sometimes these families attempt to manage extremely dangerous behaviors on their own because they believe that involving the police will result in their child or loved one's arrest, further bodily harm, or even their child's death. Families affected by severe autism are desperate for alternatives to 911 that do not involve the police. They need 24/7 access to mental health and behavioral health personnel that are specifically trained and certified in crisis prevention and intervention services that can provide trauma-informed care and are adequately trained to meet their communication needs. On January 15, 2021, a teen with autism in Louisiana was killed by a deputy after the deputy sat on the child for nine minutes. This is after the parents called the police for help because their child was having an unsafe behavior in a parked... unsafe behavior in a parking lot. These types of meltdown behaviors are really common with those that are impacted significantly by autism, and they should absolutely not result in death.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
There are countless other instances that I can mention today that I will not do to the constraints of time. However, sending police in lieu of mental and behavioral healthcare professionals that literally have thousands of accrued supervised hours of service before they're considered
Can you please wrap up your comments?
qualified to obtain a licensure, it's unfair and unsafe to expect for police to provide adequate emergency care to individuals in a mental healthcare crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, hello, this is Mashay. Good morning to everybody but Sue Frost. I strongly urge this body to implement a 24/7 mental health crisis response team that is completely separate from law enforcement, just like at least a dozen of these callers had already mentioned, but hopefully listen to us this time. There have been countless mental health-related murders from police officers that directly target Black and Brown communities, and I'm speaking straight from experience. My father, Donald Venerable, was murdered from Sacramento Police in 2001, 20 years ago, for calling 911 because the police officers thought the cell phone that he used was a gun, and they shouldn't have to call law enforcement in the first place, but unfortunately that was the case. So definitely urge this body to implement a program that is totally and utterly separate from police officers and law enforcement, and to give more than $1.5 million to this so it's not a pilot program and so that it's a sustainable program, and to have an independent advisory board that is, again, completely separate from law enforcement because we don't need any interference from police officers as they are harmful to Black and Brown communities as, you know, and in the Sacramento community. And let's see, yeah, I mean, that's all I have right now, but hopefully you take it to consideration, not even consideration, but you actually listen to all the public comments because they are very consistent with our messages, especially from those community forums I all posted that obviously aren't being taken to consideration also since we're still having conversations with the SAC sheriff.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
With the SAC sheriff, and they're still having conversations with SAC sheriffs in implementing this mental health crisis team. We don't want any partnerships with law enforcement, so leave them out. And yeah, have a good day, except for Sue Frost because you don't wear masks.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Ryan McClinton, Public Health Advocate, and also with the MHSA County Steering Committee. I'm calling because recognizing that as we're talking about this alternative to mental health plan, we're still not hearing any conversation about what does accountability and oversight look like in terms of ensuring that equity and the quality of service is landing where it needs to. We have a conversation that has now shifted because of the inclusion of law enforcement, which we recognize as a shift from 911, so there has to be some level of engagement. However, that doesn't mean that equity looks like law enforcement's voice being prioritized over those of the community stakeholders in so many of the professionals you've heard calling in so far today. You've heard from mental health professionals, you've heard from peer support specialists, you've heard from those who are directly impacted, as well as the county staff, that all recognize there's a need for these services to truly be invested in in tangible ways that truly live in the equity that's needed and that's needed to be supported. How are we measuring those things? Who's being accountable? Is there going to be an advisory board that's made primarily of community stakeholders, mental health professionals, and paramedicine folks who can actually staff these events versus law enforcement being the predominant voice that voids and often caps its out so many of the recommendations that should be being brought forward? I think one other thing that you can look at in terms of what's a model that you can review to see how can this be carried forward in terms of how prioritizing the voice of community stakeholders is in Issaquah, New York. Their county administrator has openly acknowledged that too often we have these community listening sessions where law enforcement's voice is prioritized, and they actually have veto power over the recommendations that come forward from community stakeholders. This is our opportunity as a county to get it right and actually move forward in the right direction. We also heard earlier from other commenters that there is a need for, again, asking the questions of where does equity exist and lie daily for these programs and systems, especially the carceral system. I think, again, it would be who the Board of Supervisors to truly ask those questions and make sure that there's a body made up of community stakeholders that can actually review the direction of this program, the success rates, and also does it mean to continue to grow in that area of improvement? It is an ongoing conversation, and I understand this is the beginning of it.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
I can. If we're going to build this right, we need to build it right with intention from the get-go. So recognizing where equity exists at and where it doesn't, and the disparities are at, is where we have to start this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Kenny, and I'm calling from District Five. I'm calling to urge the board to meet the demands of the Mobilize for Mental Health Coalition. Law enforcement is not qualified or compassionate enough to respond to mental health crisis calls, and they lack the expertise and training to even be included in the process of developing alternatives to law enforcement response to mental health crises. To remind you, the demands of the Mobilize for Mental Health Coalition include a sustainable 24/7 program, funding from the $4 million sheriff's surplus, as well as using the $10 million that will not be used for jail expansion, an independent advisory board, and no police interference. Trained unarmed mental health responders pose the least threat to people experiencing mental health crisis because they're trained to be effective while being the least confrontational so as not to escalate the situation. Just the presence of police often escalates the situation and triggers trauma in those already experiencing a crisis. Police treat those in crisis like criminals and inflict more trauma. I personally witnessed SAC PD respond to a mental health patient in the most cold and callous way, not showing any care or compassion for the man they should have been there to help. Their mere presence was an unnecessary escalation, and they refused a trained mental health worker's request to allow them to speak with and help the man. Back in September, Sheriff Scott Jones said himself that he would support alternative options for mental health and unhoused response. That's all the input the sheriff department should get in this process. Sacramento citizens deserve a safe and compassionate 24/7 mental health crisis response team, and we're depending on you, the board, to hear the demands and do it as right. Lastly, hearing the always unmasked Sue Frost refer to any citizen as a burden on the system both disgust me and shows her clear lack of compassion and understanding, and highlights her inability to understand mental health issues and the effect they have on those suffering from them, and hearing her every sigh and yawn is both offensive and obnoxious. Support the demands of the Mobilize for Mental Health Coalition and get rid of Sue Frost. Put on a mask.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
This matter brings to memory the Declaration by Peter Burnett, Californian's first governor, who declared the extermination of all the Takana indigenous people to this land. And Sheriff Sue Frost demonstrates mental disorders by her speech and actions of a person whose thinking is confused. We are required to wear masks, and as the earlier caller stated, she still hasn't put her mask on. She operates in defiance of the law. She overthrows the laws, and she's not operating in a manner. She asks in previous sessions for a list of agencies that discriminate or have racist policies, and she should be at the top of that list because the mental illness and disorders that we have experienced are due directly to state sanction and created crisis. This is due to your legislative actions. You're participating in genocidal war crimes because to remind you all that 10 stages of genocide begins with the classification and then the symbolization by branding, to discriminate and dehumanize through organized polarization and preparation to persecute, which is what's happening. The persecution is what's led to this mental illness, for the extermination by murder and civil death, and then to deny. So Supervisor Chair Frost says she denies that racism exists. She denies that we are in a place where we have these things happening, and she denies that every place in Sacramento, we have the most segregated schools and the most segregated communities in this state and in this nation. So we need to take a look at the underlying reasons why we have mental disorders and to look and see who actually has the mental disorders based on their actions and based on their speech because they contradict each other. So when you have policies that you're setting for those who are mentally disabled, we need to make sure we have those who are competent at following and being in compliance with the law before they go and institute any further programs that are going to further exacerbate the furtherance of the discrimination and the mental illnesses due to the torture and torment, genocidal war crimes, I yield.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Thomas, District Four. We need you to consider the health and well-being of those experiencing mental health crises first and foremost. Not budget, people. Not police funding or defunding, people. People matter, at least they should matter, and your views and your votes on this matter are what will tell us how you view their importance. Yes, on a robust, knowledgeable, experienced mental health team with the tools and funding necessary to be successful and a complete lack of police involvement, except in the evidentially rare situations where a mental health professional with years of experience specifically says, "I cannot handle this situation." Yes, on a community-based advisory board? Yes, on a program led by peers and supported by clinicians? No to any of this is a no to all of it. All pieces are needed to make this function, and to act like they are necessary is kneecap ing the program at the outset. Please don't play lip service. Please don't make grand gestures. Please just ensure that this can be successful and has the staffing and people to ensure that that happens. With 988 coming down the pipe, it's inevitable, and it would serve us well to act as an example in this state and as Kahoots and as STAR have done in their respective states. We need to build on their legacies, not dismantle their progress through timid actions and weak-willed half-measures. Please have strength and assuredness of your moral duty to help those in crisis. And lastly, a few weeks back, you had $10 million to help fulfill a handful of the requirements of the consent decree. Now you have the potential to do much more. I would hope you would see that that $10 million is easily justifiable to use here to add to other funding to make this a success. The fix for police mishandling of mental health crises isn't police continuing to handle mental health crises only in a slightly reduced capacity. I honestly thought this would be common sense for y'all. Stop giving police priority. They are stakeholders. Less calls means less funding for them, so they have a vested interest in running calls through them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, good morning. My name, Board of Supervisors, my name is Yasenia Sandoval. My family and I own a home here in the Northgate community. As a community member and a forged woman of color, I am a strong advocate for more mental health services. The Sacramento sheriff has a history of dividing up our communities and causing more harm than good when they intervene. I have lived in the Foothill Farms area as well as in the Citrus Heights area, where my parents owned their home and I grew up. We were afraid of calling cops. Our community needs mental health services desperately in order to heal from the historical racism device of sheriff's department. In addition, I'm calling for more funding for mental health that is led by local community activists and professionals, as well as keeping law enforcement away from this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Bee, and I've noticed this board seems more concerned with the health of the state rather than the health of its constituents from which it withholds funds from. You have the money. So much time has passed, and so many have died. This is not the first meeting the group Mental Health First has been mentioned, but the board neglects the incredible amount of care put into and given by Mental Health First. Rather than looking to attune to the needs of the people under your authority, you would rather attune to the needs of law enforcement, who has repeatedly and consistently caused trauma to the community. By trying to keep bringing in police, you hurt your own cause. Stop this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, and you have two minutes.
Hello, I'm calling from the Backsaber Impact Team to share stories of your constituents who could not be here today to share their stories themselves because your law enforcement has killed them. Gabby Navarez, a 22-year-old young mother with a mental illness, was fatally shot seven to 20 times by police in March of 2014 by Citrus Heights police. Her grandmother had called the police to report her vehicle was stolen. When police tracked the vehicle that was driven by Gabby, she invaded them by driving at high speeds. She was killed. Jordan Zinka, 26-year-old self-described chronically houseless gay man, was overcoming addiction and trauma of abusive relationships, was shot and killed by police in December of 2020 in Etomas Bel Air off of Marina Boulevard. Joseph Mann was an unhoused man with a history of mental illness. When he did not comply with officers' loudspeaker commands, officers intentionally tried to hit Mann with their patrol vehicle stating, "We'll get him." The same officers then exited the vehicle and pursued Mann on foot, shooting him 14 times. Daryl Richards, a 19-year-old man, was fatally shot by SAC PD in 2018 while experiencing a mental health crisis. Officers responding to a 911 call asked about a masked man brandishing a gun. Richards was found hiding under a stairwell, hiding under a stairwell, a child in a surrender position with his palms open. He had recently stated to display signs of mental illness such as paranoia and uncharacteristic aggression, and he was scheduled for a mental health evaluation. Adam Lund, 24-year-old man, was shot and killed by West SAC County police officer after a person called police to report a man holding a knife and reported that he saw him stab himself in the neck. When officers approached him, Prescott allegedly charged toward them, so they shot him. It remains unknown what led to the shooting, only that Lund exited the vehicle prior to the shooting.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, yes. Speaking of people, your constituents who have died, video footage showed Lund holding a gun and a knife. However, the gun was later determined to be a pellet gun. Justin Prescott, a 30-year-old man, was shot and killed by SAC County sheriff deputies after he was seen inside a Walmart cutting tags off of merchandise with a pocket knife. Are you going to cut me off from speaking about the dead lives, the black lives?
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Abnan. I live in Supervisor Kennedy's District, District Two. It is incredibly important that we have alternatives to police response in Sacramento. Police are not safe for residents of this county, and they need to not be involved in this alternative. The rampant patterns of violence and abuse that the police have shown is unacceptable, and they need to be divested from. We need no 911 dispatch and no officer involvement. Mental health crisis responses need 24/7 compassionate care, and the police do not provide this. The funding needed for alternative responses is nothing compared to what we pay in lawsuits on behalf of the sheriff. They are a waste of money, and they treat our communities in inhumane ways. We have everything to gain as a people by funding alternatives to police response. This conversation needs to center the people who are on the receiving end of violence and who are in need of care. It should not involve the people who are trying to exert control over these communities with their carceral violence. The police in this county have made it abundantly clear that they view us as subhuman from the way they speak about and murder us. Maurice Holly, Joseph Mann, Daryl Richards, Justin Prescott, Wallace Jory, Daisy Antinell, Gabby Navarez, Adam Lund, Robert Coleman, and Michael McIntyre are just a few of many more who I haven't named who would all still be alive if it weren't for Sacramento-area police. This is a matter of immediate safety, and more people will die if we do not act to remove police contact as much as possible and put police funding toward programs that actually help people. We already have community organizations like MH First. They just need funding, and you can provide that, which means you can save lives so that we don't have to keep adding names to this list. Thank you, and please make the choices that are truly best for Sacramento's safety.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, I'm calling to reiterate the importance of having a compassionate and effective 24/7 mental health crisis team to address mental health crisis calls. On December 22, 2004, my brother Ronnie Pino, who suffered from epilepsy since the age of nine, was taken to Heritage Oaks Hospital, where he was seeking treatment for his hallucinations that were brought on by medicine prescribed by his physician. He grew agitated because they locked the doors and would not let him go outside to smoke a cigarette. He broke their window to escape, and the cops were called. The cops were confrontational, jittery people, on train in how to deal with a person as disturbed as my brother. Instead of talking to him, they did everything wrong. And what is absolutely heartbreaking is that the officers ignored my mother's plea to take him to the hospital after tasering him twice. He had a vagus nerve stimulator implant, and she knew the shock from the taser was going to hurt him. Instead, they threatened to tase her, a 62-year-old woman, and then proceeded to take him straight to jail, where he received no medical treatment nor his prescribed medicine. He later died alone inside his cell. My brother was not a criminal. He had no prior record of any crime in his 31 years of life. He was a 31-year-old Hispanic mentally challenged man with the mind of a 12-year-old boy. I remember growing up, a few times, the Sacramento and County Sheriff were called out to our home because my brother had these fits, you know, he was epileptic, and he would get frustrated. And they always knew how to talk to my brother. They always talked him down, and by the end of the call, he was out in their sheriff's car squad, and they were showing him all the lights and bells and whistles.
Can you please wrap up your comments, ma'am?
But I believe that these professionally trained, I believe that if there was professionally-trained mental health professionals that day, my brother may still be alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes, and could you mute the meeting in the background, please?
Mute the meeting in the background? Okay. I can't hear myself if you do that. Okay.
Okay, and could you start with your comments? You have two minutes. Thank you.
Good day. This is an extraordinary situation. I'm calling from Body Politic House of Yahweh, Israel, the State Thrift Funds LLC, to condemn Sacramento County agents doing business de facto as Sacramento County of. Furthermore, you are attempting to have a vote in favor of the use of funds needed to help the mental health victims to pay the law enforcement, who are known to use their authority to harm the public, to handle a mental health issue. That's suspicious. Sacramento County agents are defying California's full financial disclosure law. Every judge, sheriff, and district attorney, et cetera, we need to see every form, 700 for the past five years. What are you really doing with these funds? Take care.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Teresa Flores. I live in County District Two. I'm a member of Sacramento Act, and I'm calling to reiterate the importance of having a 24/7 mental health crisis response team that does not include law enforcement. I think we've heard already too many comments about how that can end up with people literally being dead when law enforcement responds to those kinds of calls. And at Sacramento Act, we know about a lot of issues that are impacting our communities, especially unhoused communities, people with mental health challenges. And again, we've also seen how law enforcement can actually have a negative impact when responding to those kinds of challenges. Working in education, I also know that there's a lot of need for these kind of mental health crisis response from youth in particular. And again, we've heard from a lot of youth about the negative impact that having police respond to those kinds of calls can have. In addition, you know, my son and I, just in the last few days, we've seen multiple sheriff deputies not even wearing a mask. And so if they can't even follow a simple health guidance, like wearing a mask, how can we expect them to respond to a mental health crisis? I think, again, we've heard too many examples of how that can not just go wrong, but how can people end up literally dead. So we urge the county to, the County Board of Supervisors, to support a 24/7 mental health response team that is not just funded at the low level, but that is fully funded to really respond well, especially during this time of crisis for our community with the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Rodan, and I live in District Three. I'm calling to aid in supporting Sacramento County implementing the 24/7 mental health crisis response system. While more research is done and the response system is implemented, I suggest the county earmarks $14 million for the program as a good faith statement to the public. $10 million was saved by abandoning the proposed jail annex, and there is a $4 million surplus in the sheriff's budget, so those funds could easily be used to be set aside, and the concerns about where to find the money can be left aside. Additionally, I wanted to point out an important piece of the report provided by county staff. They mentioned how using the current 911 call center, that staff would have access to whether callers have a criminal, a history of quote-unquote criminal offenses and the need for an armed response. This type of mindset is exactly why we do not need to have a call center or mental health response connected to law enforcement. Sacramento County and throughout this country, we have a law enforcement system fraught with overpolicing, police violence, brutality, and murder, and incarcerating people of color and those in poverty disproportionately. We need a mental health response that is not based on the quote-unquote criminal history of the caller, but one based on the needs of the caller. Last thing that concerns expressed about being able to find folks to hire, I would implore the county to look to Mental Health First. That's where to start when considering hiring. It appears from the report provided by staff that they were not even consulted and should have slapped a face to the community. Not only were they mentioned frequently during the listening sessions I attended that the county put on, they've been mentioned to multiple times today and many times over the last year or so. They have been providing service to our community on a voluntary basis for over a year now. We should be honoring their work and dedication to our community. I feel hopeful for our county, and I'm looking forward to see how much a crisis response system can bring help and care to our community, as well as reduce the jail population, which would help Sacramento County meet the May's consent decree, which wasn't really addressed in the report, but this is a side effect. If we're not arresting people who have mental health crises, that will decrease our jail populations, thus being able to help.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, I've heard, care in our cages for a while now, and this is a great step to actually carrying this out, and I fully support this direction. So please support the 24/7 system with a separate call center, earmark $14 million dollars for this and honor the work of.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Already doing the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. I am calling as a concerned citizen of District Five. I just wanted to express my full-throated support of all of the Mobilize for Mental Health advocates and the coalition that's built around this issue. I think that most everything that these callers have mentioned is very important and should be taken into consideration. I think it's unintelligent, it's not wise, it's a conflict to include law enforcement in an issue that law enforcement has created. Though a lot of what these folks have said has just been very well thought, and it makes sense, and it's really time for SAC County to do things that make sense. I now want to shift my focus to Chair Sue Frost. I just find that your complete disdain for human decency, it's almost laughable. I don't understand why you occupy the seat that you do if you don't want to be a moral example for your constituents and for your fellow board members. You have no idea what other folks in that room might be facing. Folks have shared with you the loss of life in their own families from people who don't want to do a simple act like wear a mask. It appores me that you won't do it, but know that you've been called on it and recognize that people see you, and I think that you might want to consider that for your next election. Your behavior is grotesque, and it's embarrassing. It's very embarrassing for Sacramento County. I think we're better than this. I think we know better than this, and I think we can do better. I challenge you to do better. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good day to everyone except Sue Frost. My name is Steve. I'm a resident of District Two. Mental health crises do not follow a set schedule. We need you to fund a 24/7 community-led response to mental health crises like MH First and not involve police response. We don't want law enforcement showing up, further traumatizing individuals experiencing mental health issues. Law enforcement and the carceral state, not to mention the capitalist system itself and its inherent racism, heterosexism, homophobia are some of the primary contributing factors with respect to mental health illness. Law enforcement always exacerbates the situation. They are looking for statutes for someone to violate to justify arresting them, as though that is what is called for in situations like those. The criminal justice system is not the place or institution to be handling these situations. It's a matter of public health, not public safety. Joseph Mann, Daryl Richards, Antonio Thomas would be alive today if not for police involvement. And I would like to end by saying thank you to everyone except Sue Frost, and as Jidhu Krishnamurti said, "It's no measure of health to be well-adjusted to a profoundly sick society." Have a good day.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Sure. My name is Nikki Jones, and just calling, of course, to encourage y'all to do the right thing, to listen to the community, to hear that what the problem has been cannot be the solution to the problem as well. And I'm not, you know, I understand that the process of removing these types of calls from law enforcement requires conversations with law enforcement to make that happen. Nobody's saying that's, you know, not part of it, but creating an entire system, what you do when you, when the 911 system is used, is you create a whole program whose lens, whose bottleneck, whose entry point is still that of a carceral system that has been the system causing harm even unto death for many. People have said so eloquently, but I'll say again, you know, Marshall Miles, Dejounte Plinow, how many, you know, more recently, others, how many lives will we lose to the sheriff while y'all are debating how much power the sheriff should, and these police chiefs should have in deciding how this program goes? We have experts in the community, we have experts in the field that can build this program and that should have the opportunity to do that. And, you know, it has, if it's not 24 hours, if it's not fully funded, what you're doing is you're saying it's okay still for law enforcement to be those responders elsewhere. And it's not okay. That is what the community has been saying, that is the uproar. It is not okay, and it is causing harm, people suffering, languishing. Thank you to the woman who called in about her brother, you know, languishing and dying in the jail. There is no excuse for that kind of violence, and y'all have the opportunity to build something different and make a better. I absolutely heard the beginning of your sentence, too. Thank you. Y'all have the opportunity to do something different and better. You have the money to do it, and it's the will. You need to decide that you have the will, you have the support of the community, and you do not have to bow to law enforcement will at every turn of your decision-making.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Caller, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, okay. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
I didn't do nothing, were the last words of Maurice Holly before being shot by Sacramento County Sheriff Deputy. Maurice Holly, a 55-year-old man, was shot and killed by SAC County Sheriff deputies after being called to respond to a suspicious man sitting in front of a home. At least nine shots were fired at Holly before a deputy thought he was reaching for a weapon in his waistband. A lawsuit alleges that deputies did not call for medical care or allow medical personnel to treat Holly in a timely manner after he was shot. And that allegedly, or that alleged delay of medical care caused Holly extreme physical pain and was contributing cause of Holly's serious injuries. Wallace Gory, his last words were, "What are you going to do to me?", before Sacramento County Sheriff's deputies shot him. A 56-year-old man was fatally shot by Sacramento County Sheriff's deputies after an acquaintance called 911 to conduct a welfare check. His wife reported that Gory had struggled with mental illness and suicidally for many years prior to that incident. When sheriff's deputies arrived at Gory's residence, he grabbed for a pitchfork and advanced at them. Gory was shot by one of the deputies after failing to comply with their orders and died at the scene. Brigitte McIntyre, a 32-year-old man, was fatally shot by Sacramento County Sheriff's deputies as he was running away from them on the Highway 50. McIntyre's mother had reached out, his mother had reached out to the fire and police officials twice earlier that day, saying her son was acting very strange. Deputies fired 28 shots. How many guns does it take for 28 shots to be fired at someone? He was struck by seven bullets, six of them in his back. Sacramento County later settled a wrongful death lawsuit over the shooting, $1.7 million just for that one.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Dejounte Plinow was a 40-year-old black man who was experiencing homelessness and a mental health crisis when he was killed by the Sacramento Police Department on April 26th, April 2016, excuse me. Police said that Dejounte was exhibiting strange behavior, another strange behavior one.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
And ranting incoherently. Are you gonna hang up on the experiences of black lives? He was put in the back of a car and told he was not being detained. His mental health crisis escalated to a critical level from being in the back of a police car.
Thank you for your call.
When the door was.
Please send the next caller, and I believe this is the last caller. Hi caller, please make your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Shealy. I am a resident of District One. Thank you for allowing me to comment this afternoon. I'm calling to advocate for an advisory board for the 911 alternative. I'm calling to advocate for an advisory board for the 911 Alternatives Response Program composed of community members, including peers, consumers, and family members with experience in mental health crisis responses, as well as community-based organizations who have been working on the ground in this area, such as Mental Health First here in Sacramento. I would also like to underscore how these law enforcement responses disproportionately affect Black and Brown communities. Input from an advisory board composed of impacted community members can provide valuable insight into the underlying dynamics of disparities, and this understanding is critical in designing a program that is successful and meets the community's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, there was one more caller, but they had already made their phone call, and so we've notified them that it's one caller per item. Thank you. And Supervisor Serna had some comments.
Great. Thank you. And I see that I have the other colleagues that are in the queue, so I'll try and make my remarks brief. First, I want to thank the callers that waited patiently to weigh in on this important discussion. And I really want to acknowledge the fact that I think there's been a consistent theme of concern expressed last time. We had this in front of us and certainly here today. I want to try and encapsulate it and address with the help of staff some of the concerns. I don't know. Some of them may be a matter of interpretation. I'm not sure, but there certainly has been a lot of concern expressed today by public speakers about law enforcement and how do we, you know, how do we remove law enforcement from the equation? I think one of the speakers, Nikki, who chimes in frequently on this subject, I think mentioned something that's worth repeating, and that is the acknowledgement that there has to be some level of coordination in the process of developing the, developing the separation, the handoff, if you will. And I want to hear from staff. And Jim, maybe you can come to the podium. And Bruce, you can be prepared to chime in as well. But can you be, can you clarify what you feel is being interpreted by some of the folks that spoke this morning? And maybe speak to this issue of what you're doing now when you're talking to police chiefs and you're doing what appears to be, and, you know, from their perspective, perhaps more outreach to law enforcement than other groups? Because I think it's important for us to be on the same page with the people that we represent to mutually understand what is actually occurring and why it's occurring the way it is and what ultimately is the intention for the relationship between law enforcement and whatever we develop.
Yes, I'd like to address that. If you remember before the February 24th hearing...
Could you bring the microphones a little closer, Jim?
How's that?
That's good. Thank you.
We had the listening sessions and the surveys with the community. We did extensive outreach. We got great response, and it was real clear what the community wanted. They want exactly what was voiced by many of the callers today. They want an independent call center. They want a response that does not include law enforcement. They want community involvement. And that outreach was done before that hearing. So, we felt we had a real good handle on what the community wanted. I mean, there was no mistaking it. We were chided at the last meeting for not including our discussion with law enforcement. So, that was more of our emphasis this time. They are, as you mentioned, a key element of developing the protocols to determine which calls are safe for our mental health and peer staff to respond to and which require a law enforcement response. And that differentiation is going to be necessary no matter how we implement this. And so, it requires the discussions with law enforcement so we can develop those protocols. And that's a key piece of this. And my apologies to the community for not being more emphasizing more of what their desire in this latest report, but their concerns are huge. And quite honestly, how we develop this program, we will make recommendations, and it will be your board's decision as to how we proceed. And I have perceived a difference of opinion as whether we use 911 or a separate number. And ultimately, no matter what we recommend, that's your decision.
Right. Supervisor, if I may just add something to Jim's comments. As you asked about the callers and the perception, there's never been any doubt that the type of response we're talking about here is a non-law enforcement response. In Jim's presentation, he laid out what the model would be for our response team. So, that, there's no disputing that. The question that we are posing to the board is the type of dispatch system that we use here. The last time we were here, we talked about a standalone system with mental health professionals taking the calls. The question is whether we focus only on that or whether we continue to look at the system they use in the cahoots model, for example, which is 911, or a system that they use in Houston and other places where it's more of a hybrid. You have mental health staff in the 911 system, which, by the way, is staffed by non-law enforcement people to begin with. That's the issue here. If the board's desire was that we only look at a standalone system, we could do that. We felt that it was important to put before you whether or not we look at these other approaches as well, in the context, by the way, of what's going on at the federal level and the state level. But there's no doubt that it'd be a non-law enforcement response on the street to the situation. That's a very important point.
It is an important point. I'm glad you stressed it because I think there's clearly, I think, some ongoing belief that somewhere we deviated, and we've already made up our mind, and we have a preconceived notion that we're going to sugarcoat this and pacify those that have expressed concern, and we'll ultimately have law enforcement joining, the clinicians and the mental health service providers. And, you know, I, for one, am more interested in a kind of a wholesale change. I mean, that's why I think we're here, is we've heard the community ask for that, and rightly so, citing a number of instances that we're reminded of today. So, that's why I wanted to have this question-and-answer period with both of you on that key point because it was almost to a person common in what we heard. So, thank you for that. In terms of budget, there was, there were a number of concerns expressed about why aren't we discussing the numbers right now? Why aren't we having, you know, a robust conversation about the budgetary consequence of a new, you know, of a paradigm shift to a non-law enforcement response for mental health crisis? And again, I'm looking for you to explain, both of you, again, the process or even and the process so that it's clear to people what we're doing today, separate from what we plan to do, perhaps even with another workshop or meeting before we get to recommended budget in June, final budget in September.
So, what we did today was provide you with information about the three models you asked about. So, you have those dollar figures in the board report, and Jim had it in his presentation. The question of how we fund it, of course, is a budget discussion that we have to have, that we bring back to you in June and then follow up with September. But it's starting to sound like a broken record here. We have an important development here, though. We can get 85% matching funding here in our system. We think we should consider that in what we bring back to you as part of the budget discussion.
Yeah. I mean, that, to me, seemed like, you know, some of the, some of the better news that we've heard in a while. I think it's critical on that particular subject, Bruce, the prospect of using that federal aid for this purpose. If we can distill that down at the right time when we're certain that it's going to be used, and I understand there's still, the State Department of Health Services has to do their thing. But I think at the right time, I think that ought to be the subject of a very clear explanation to our community members that are watching this very closely so they understand that where the money's coming from and how it might be complemented with other sources. And I know that there's some that are insistent that the funds come from the sheriff's department. It's still unclear to me in some respects whether that is just intended to be punitive or if that's intended to, or if that is simply where folks are looking at because it is, continues to be the largest, you know, pie slice in our budget, which I totally get. So, I'm not advocating either one, but at this point, but it seems to me that that good news is something we want to explain very clearly so that when people share their concerns about where's the money going to come from, we have a really solid answer.
Right. Right. I should say, Supervisor, that we have our federal lobbyists on this with us. We've got our state lobbyists working with us at the state level. The news on this came out frankly after the board letter and everything else has pretty much developed for this, but it is good news. And the other thing I wanted to point out, too, that responded to the caller's points, we're talking here and making a recommendation to about a 24/7 system.
Yeah.
And further thinking that through. So, we recognize the importance of that.
No, I'm glad you made that point, and I'll be quiet here in a minute and hear from others, but I'm glad you mentioned it because there were a couple callers that reminded us that, you know, mental health crises don't happen at a given time during the course of the day, just like regular health prices don't respect the clock. So, that's important to underscore. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, you know, Jim, for the presentation, and Bruce, and all the work you've done on this. You know, it's interesting, as we have this discussion, it just kind of strikes me as it's almost a little bit counterintuitive to call this an alternative to 911. It's an alternative to law enforcement. I mean, that's what we're striving for. And I think, you know, you talk a lot about the community, and the community speaking, you know, I don't know if a lot of my constituents were involved in those discussions, but my constituents also share the same sentiments in that they want a better response for folks suffering from a mental health crisis that does not involve law enforcement. I've dealt with that in my own family. I've had discussions with some people in this, in this room here about struggles in my own family where we've called and law enforcement was the only option. And when it's a dangerous situation, clearly a hazard, that's appropriate, but there are a lot of other times where we'd be better served by having a professional there and without using law enforcement. So, I think adopting that terminology is, I think, important for this, just intuitively to help people think about it. And just to piggyback on some of Supervisor Serna's, you know, questions and comments about the 911 system. I mean, my experience with the 911 system is, as you know, it's been evolving for decades in the state of California, and as Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, it is a comprehensive emergency response system. I mean, it is not, so that's, I think that's the other thing that some people forget sometimes. It's not just a law enforcement system. There's a very large body of state law that designates, yes, law enforcement for being the initial call taker, but this is state law that directs that, that for any emergencies in the community, it comes through that system. So, I think we should, you know, we need to develop good policy here and keep in mind that just because it's somehow affiliated with the 911 system, and as Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna both pointed out, you have to involve law enforcement so you can figure out how to not involve law enforcement, right? I mean, that's what we're trying, striving for. But also keep in mind that all these organizations that rely on 911, whether it's law enforcement or fire or EMS or the cahoots program in Eugene, they also have non-emergency lines or separate dedicated numbers. So, I think just because we, and I don't know where the board will decide to go, ultimately on the details, I mean, I'm very heartened by the fact that it seems like we all support this. Just because we rely on a 911 system or the current kind of structure that's in place doesn't mean law enforcement is in control of this. I mean, I have a lot of friends who are firefighters, ambulance drivers, and I tell you, they would certainly bristle at the notion that they are somehow controlled by law enforcement just because the initial calls come through the 911 system. I, for one, would, I'm very eager to get started on this. I mean, I like that we have the good news, and I just, I hate to wait till next year to implement something. I sure wish we could move quickly. I mean, you look what the city of Sacramento is already doing and what they're implementing. I mean, I mean, and maybe even in the interim, we can adopt something that's like that in the unincorporated area, and, you know, I don't know, but that's definitely something I'm interested in while we're working out some more of the details with the other jurisdictions and while we're waiting to see what happens at the state and federal levels. So, but I'm very, very much in support of this, of this program, and just want to finish by applauding Supervisor Kennedy for his leadership in this area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, would certainly echo comments of my colleagues in thanking the callers and certainly those who participated in the community process, as well as obviously the work that's been done by Mr. Wagstaff, Mr. Hunt, certainly in the direction of Ms. Edwards and a host of other folks I'm sure that have assisted in this regard. I want to bring it back to a couple of points here. I want to talk about the community advisory board matter, but first, I want to go back to the budget because we've had discussions, actually within the last couple of weeks, regarding policy direction, and board had quite a lengthy session just a week ago in talking about some recommended policy framework for not just reserves, but how we would make funding recommendations and direction to our staff around that. And so, I want to bring it back to some of the points were made by some of the speakers, but also I think it goes back to this issue about what may have just come forward as good news on federal dollars. Because one of the policy recommendations, and again, maybe I speak a bit from experience here, is that, and we didn't adopt this last week, but it's certainly been embedded in budgets for years and years and years, for decades, so it's not anything that's new in way of thinking, is that the county, you know, wouldn't backfill or overmatch. And so, if we buy into a federal allotment of dollars and that brings good to this county, then I think it needs to be clear as we frame this up, and this is not for the decision today, that, you know, we stand up a program, however we choose to fund that, that it's not going to be subject to some ever flow of, if it's going to be a 24/7 system, there's not going to be some ever flow that comes from federal or state sources. Those are realities that we deal with in any given budget year. But just in light of that conversation, again, I hadn't heard the word, as I said last week, "we're overmatching" a long time. But that gets built into thinking, into recommendations in this board by the time it gets to us in the budget cycle, you know, decisions are made then about how money is parceled out. So, again, I'm not reading any things more than just that if we choose those sources, then the commitment, though, still needs to be clear that going forward, and we don't bind future boards or, you know, future budget decisions, but it needs to be really clear that it's not an overmatch, it's an opportunity that allows us to, you know, be very robust in standing something up if we choose that. And the reason I raise that issue is because I also heard commenters talking about MHSA and realignment dollars, and in the same breath, we've heard certainly some today, but in past, you know, concern about taking from other areas in the, in the health realm, whether it be mental health or public health or other things to support, you know, a good quality of life in a realm of health services, that we not, you know, take from those sources in order to do something else. Now, again, those are choices that are presented. So, I make these points because I'm concerned that going into June and September, but particularly into June, that understanding dollars get roped off and they get allocated, there has to be some sort of decision guidance given in June, and that by the time we get to September, recognizing there's a need for program development, that, you know, even if the board desires to do something, that then depending upon what may be out there or not, that then we were faced with choices of having to pull it from another department. And again, I recognize this tension between law enforcement and health services and the commitment of budget allocations in a given year. I just don't want us getting, from my perspective, kind of getting trapped in that unintentionally. And I just, so I raised the issue right here and today because in my view, again, we make choices, we only have, you know, limits, limited discretionary dollars when it comes to general fund and so forth, but on the other hand, those limitations oftentimes we impose on ourselves because we choose not to fund something or we say, well, as long as you, not just with the federal, I said "overmatch," but... said overmatch, but even with transportation monies and other things, that's the money you get, that's all you get. You don't get something from the general fund. So again, just from the standpoint of thinking, I want to be very straightforward about this. I'm concerned that going into June, that, you know, if we're looking at an allocation that's 10, 15, 20 million dollars, whatever it might be, it won't all be spent in the first year because it's going to take a while to stand this up. I just want to make it really clear that I want to have flexibility as one member of this board in that conversation, both going into June, but also certainly into the September timeframe. And again, I appreciate the work that's been done around this because again, if there are funding opportunities, we got to draw upon them, but we need to design a program that's going to be best for this community, do what, you know, certainly this board and this deliberative process decides is best, coming from the community, from our, you know, professional staff and from others. And I just, again, I'm concerned about that just in light of, I think, thought process. So I make that point. I want to go back to this Community Advisory Board if I could for a moment because hasn't been much talk about that. I don't know in the other communities whether that's, you know, a foundational element, but I think as we talk through this and certainly work our way through it, I think that's a very important part.
Yeah, I think so Supervisor, if I could on that point. I think what the callers were reacting to earlier in our public forums, a suggestion was made, well, we, I should back up. We had always wanted to have an ongoing advisory body on this system as we roll it out and as we operate it. And the suggestion had been made during the public comments that maybe you could just tap into an existing advisory group like the Mental Health Board. Clearly, the callers didn't like that idea and they were reacting to that. But, and we can relook at the type of advisory group we have on this. We acknowledge we need to have one and it needs to be community members. If that's not the right approach, perhaps we should think of another one, but we do need to have that.
Okay. Again, because I'm very supportive of that. I haven't heard anything to the contrary amongst my colleagues and I didn't hear that be contrary from the staff, but I want, I think that Community Advisory Board and how we, you know, choose to construct it and so forth, obviously is something that we'll have to, you know, have further discussion around, but that's reassuring. In the staff recommendation and recommend actions, a couple more items I wanted to touch on. One is, and I think Jim talked about it, this analysis expanding the mental health urgent care clinic. You know, again, having been on the board the years I have, obviously reductions we made at the Mental Health Treatment Center and, you know, we really haven't, you know, put dollars back in that would give us the 24/7 component. And several callers, but I think we acknowledge that, you know, that front door, certainly for the existing response, you know, is, I won't say it's non-existent, but the emergency rooms have, you know, borne a lot of that or people ended up, you know, you know, being booked into jail or other things happened. But I think that that's really important. And I think I one would like to see us have that conversation, I might talk about sooner rather than later. That's a piece, I think, that again, we, you know, rolled it out a couple of years ago with establishing urgent care, but it doesn't, that doesn't operate 24/7 either. And I think if we're talking about a system-wide approach here, both on the response, but I think to the issue of, you know, having alternatives that, you know, you know, really look to the crisis and some appropriate responses. So I guess I would ask as a part of this direction, rather than just, you know, some further analysis of that, I'd like to have that for right front and center discussion come the June budget. I think it's really important.
Glad to.
Okay. One last thing I just wanted to touch on, and again, it was embedded in the recommendations, was number two was it says explore and propose a specific area of the county to begin a mental health crisis response system. We touched on that a little bit in discussion earlier this morning. I, in my view, that, you know, if we're going to roll this out, again, it may be done in phases, but we need to take a look at the entirety of the county and that may be a big bite, a whole one bite, but nonetheless, you know, people live, work and visit this county in, you know, across the thousand square miles. And I don't think we should just limit this to a particular neighborhood. Obviously, we may have a higher preponderance of calls, you know, based upon, you know, historical data, but I think this needs to be, when we bring this up, it needs to be made available to the entirety of the county, assuming we have buy-in from, you know, city jurisdictions as relates to some of the handoffs. But nonetheless, the system ought to be available to the citizenry of this county, whether you live, you know, north, south, east or west. And so I just, I feel really strongly about that, the costs associated with doing that, but I just think, you know, kind of doing it bits and pieces doesn't really work.
Can I just chime in here real quick on that last point? I think it's really important because otherwise you're going to have communities pitted against each other and, you know, there'll be winners and losers and this is way too important to leave it to chance that, you know, we're going to, you know, start some disagreement between neighborhoods or, you know, communities in the unincorporated counties. So I totally agree with that on that one.
I think that's good feedback. Thank you.
And lastly then, again, I know others still want to speak here, but I, you know, I appreciate the work that's been done around this in a fairly short amount of time. But I can't stress, I think, any better than some of the folks that called in, you know, some of the urgency around this because any moment of any day, someone could call in, we'll have an incident responded to or a situation responded to and either good things or bad things happen. And so I think, you know, that in back of my mind and listening to the commentary today and in the past, and I think we've all had a chance to reflect on that here this morning and early afternoon. And so that just drives me in some of my comments to, again, we want to do this, we want to do it right. There are budget considerations, but there are, you know, there are real people, real lives, real families that are affected in one way or the other. So I'm going to keep pressing this in that regard. Again, it's not because you're not doing good work and, you know, bringing your best recommendations to this board, but I just, that sense of urgency really sticks with me today. So I would like to see us, again, as I said earlier, and I'll conclude with this, is that if there's the ability to begin to implement something sooner, you know, in a way that's meaningful, that doesn't disregard obviously community and, you know, in the concerns of staff, then I could see us do that. If it's mobile crisis response teams, at least having the addition of some of the folks that we've heard from, you know, the peer councils or the other mental health professionals and start that right away, you know, that to me would be, you know, I think a good basis for, you know, again, building the larger program here, which we'll see in a few months, I trust. But again, there's urgency, I believe. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. I know that Supervisor Kennedy is queued up to speak and I'm assuming he's going to wrap up. Are you, okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I'm in a position to wrap up. I'm just going to make comments just like the rest of us. I, and these are really not in any particular order of importance. It's just I was writing down while comments were coming in. One of the things that I've noticed is, and I just, and callers talked about it, but I noticed it when I got the staff report as well, how we started down this path of investigating, and this is not a loaded question by the way, of the cahoots model and the STAR model were kind of the ones we were looking at and now we've moved to crisis now. I just, just a short answer as to why we're making this shift, I just.
Evidence-based, full county implementation, non-911 call center. I mean, those are issues that have been brought up for discussion. This is a place where it's been implemented in its entirety. So that's a model for us to look at. And if we decide to go with a non-911 call center, it's a good model to implement.
Fair enough. I mean, I will admit that I, along with members of the public who've called in and said so, when I first read, you know, Maricopa County, the first thing comes to my Sheriff Arpaio and so I immediately get nervous, but.
You notice he's not a part of this crisis now program.
Yes, yes. I understand that. He'd have to do it from prison. The other, I am glad to hear about the interest in the Community Advisory Board. I do think that that's important as well. Other callers have called in and we've gotten emails about, and again, none of this is in order, about funding from the jail construction that the board previously has put off or canceled but didn't enter into. Maybe the CEO could, you know, address, is that doable?
Yes, I'm happy to answer that. The money that was set aside for the building of the mental health and health facility, we still have significant ADA issues that need to be addressed in both the main jail and RCCC. So it's not like we can just not do those things and reallocate this money. Those things still have to be done in addition to somehow addressing the booking area in the main jail. And then finally, since we're not building the new annex, we are going to have to significantly reduce population in the jail. And in order to do that safely, we will have to fund significantly more programs for folks in the community. So we're going to need a lot of money for all of those things.
Okay, thank you. Have we collaborated with the healthcare systems on this at all? I mean, particularly like UCD. This only comes up because I had a meeting with them about something else and we started talking about this and there seems to be an interest. So we might want to reach out.
Any questions?
The health systems? Yes.
They were not included in the discussions, but we need to.
Since it's their ERs that were going to be impacting, it would probably be a good idea and they may actually be helpful.
Well, we certainly got some input from them regarding the issues in their emergency departments.
Right, constantly. Thank you. MHSA. So there was a caller that called in and it sounded like a foregone conclusion that this was going to be paid for by MHSA. I don't remember having that conversation frankly. Of course, whenever we're looking at mental health services, we look at MHSA as a potential. There's no question. But even if we were to go after MHSA funding on this, it still has to go through the MHSA.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, we have not.
So no, the MHSA dollars wouldn't be spent in a vacuum in the county dozens that we're doing it. It has to go before the MHSA.
Absolutely. The MHSA dollars have a very clear-cut process. We all know that. And if that was the course we were taking, we'd follow that process to the word.
Okay, thank you. And finally, you know, the subject comes up regularly as we're looking at budget dollars and so forth and the sheriff's budget. And I appreciate Supervisor Serna's comments, whether it's punitive or not. And, you know, I have been saying that I think that parts of this funding needs to come out of the sheriff's office or department budget, in my opinion. I don't find it punitive, though it is a question that is worthy of asking. You know, I mean, whenever you're looking for funds and you have different buckets of money, you always got to look at the biggest one. And let's face it, the sheriff's department is a huge drain on, not a drain, but it's a huge part of our general fund. And so I still think that it's just from a financial perspective, the prudent thing to do is to look at, you know, our largest areas of expense where it's relevant. And I think that it's entirely relevant here because there is such a clear nexus between what we're trying to do and the operations of the sheriff's department. We would be, hopefully, the idea is to alleviate some of the workload of the sheriff's department if we do this correctly. So therefore, why not look at sheriff's budget? And furthermore, the idea that this, that doing so would compromise public safety, I think shows that we too narrowly define what public safety is. This whole discussion we've had today has been about public safety. And so if we were to take an adequate amount of money that would normally and traditionally go to the sheriff's department, budget it for something like this, that in my opinion is directly related, I think that we are increasing public safety and not decreasing it. So I just think we need to look at public safety a little differently than we have traditionally. So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. I had a couple comments I wanted to make. I wanted to first say that I, I agree with, I'm trying to remember who said we should start as soon as possible. I think it was Supervisor Natoli, that we should start as soon as possible, but I, and I, and I think to get started, it wouldn't necessarily mean that we would have to start everywhere. Maybe we can start somewhere and with the pilot that we originally discussed. The reason I say this is because your comments early in your presentation regarding the potential 80% matching funding from the federal government and possibly more from the state would, and possibly legislation that would be statewide mandating some type of a program that could ultimately change the whole branding, the whole number, the whole everything and the cost of basically branding that and educating to Supervisor Kennedy's point, which was well-taken, that it does cost a lot to train the general public to get that in their mind, that that's who they call in that scenario. I would feel bad if we got out there ahead of it, one year ahead of it, and then had to turn around and change the whole thing and spend twice as much on the branding. So I feel like, I feel the same way though. I hope we can get started as soon as possible. And I did talk with some of the law enforcement community regarding the conversations and they were, they felt very positive about this program. And I was excited that there might be that potential to Supervisor Desmond's and I think Natoli's comments regarding, you know, the 911 system and is there a way that this can be part of it? Maybe there's a way it can be part of it until we know where this is going and we can separate it out entirely. I don't know. That way we're not, I'm not really sure. But I, I think I like the idea of 24/7 rather than part-time. I totally agree with Supervisor Serna who made the comment regarding these things don't just happen at certain times of the day. Having experience in the emergency room, I know that firsthand. And I also want to express, I toured the mental health facility and I, you know, I know the challenge of having a place to take them or the, you know, the resources. Once we have this, you know, 911 center, we need to have, it's going to be a huge lift, but it's important that we have those resources. And I wish there, I wish there was a way that we could maybe apply some of the consent decree that this could maybe satisfy some of this consent decree. I don't know if it can in some way. If we're reducing the size of our jails and we need more programs outside, I wish there was a way that we could have that conversation around maybe a mental health facility or, you know, the, maybe, maybe there's a way we can change the way we look at what we were going to build in, next to the jail and have that be the resource that, you know, that actually reduces inmates and actually provides the care that people need. And I, I also wanted to just close by thanking for Supervisor Kennedy for his leadership. I think this is, and I want to especially thank the staff for all your hard work and your open-minded, the way you have approached this. You came back with something so much even better. It's getting better every time. That's just amazing. So I wanted to thank you for that and look forward to our conversations. I guess my concern about the money, because we were told that the money is tight, we have to satisfy the consent decree and that if we allocate money to something, it will take from something else. So I'll look forward to having those budget discussions and understanding what are we taking it from and how's it going to impact the programs, the great programs that are already in place. So those are my comments. And at this time, I think you were just wanting direction and I believe we gave it. Is that correct?
We have a clue.
Okay.
So do we, are you asking for action? You had recommended actions, which was an action item. And I think you've heard comments, as Chair said, from all of us and Jim's response. So do you want us to reframe that in the form of a motion or is it clear? I mean, obviously you've heard individually, but collectively here, so.
Supervisor, I think you've been clear in terms of the 24/7 approach. You made it clear, I think that was the sentiment of the board, a countywide approach to that. I think you are interested in us continuing, as we say in the recommendation, to explore and do further. do further analysis on expanding the mental health urgent care center. And we certainly heard the comments about starting something at least as soon as possible, and we're going to explore those options. One question I would have, maybe Jim feels it differently, is on the dispatch. We proposed exploring both the standalone as well as how we might use 911. It wouldn't hurt Supervisor if we perhaps had some clarity on that.
Oh, I believe, the, are you talking about what I was saying?
I mean, just as the board. I heard different comments from the board on that.
I, I believe, at least, that there was, there were some, some availability in, with, within some of the jurisdictions of the law enforcement, not with the sheriff, but with law enforcement whereby there, they could accommodate you having an operator within their, operated independently within their system, and they welcomed that. And I personally think that would be an opportunity for people that are new to, to learn from the dispatchers that are already there that have been triaging a lot of this, to, to just be able to take advantage of learning about the system and so forth. And not that that's maybe the end goal, but it's a good place to start, to see if there's efficiencies there that would save us money, that we could spend it somewhere else. That's just my thought. Supervisor Natoli.
Maybe to get some clarification, because I don't think it's a point that should be lost today, because I think staff obviously doesn't work around this. So, if, if, to be clear, if we have a standalone number, whatever, you know, whether it's the 988 or, or a 10-digit number, I think it needs to be a simple number though. I would concur with that, that 10-digit is a little difficult to remember at times. But I, but I would question then, so, even with a standalone number, folks could call that. But if they, is it intended that if they called 911, that there would be the ability within the system and whatever jurisdiction, whether it was the unincorporated areas and/or the municipalities, that then with the standalone number, they would do the handoff? Or, or, so, just take a moment, because I think you're seeking direction, so I'd like to have some clarification, at least what you were thinking, Jim, or what the proposal you were looking at.
It is our desire in working with law enforcement, all the different agencies within the county, that when they receive a call, that they can do their triage and determine as a mental health call, they would forward it to us and we would respond.
Okay. So, we would, so, the standalone would be the central, central in the sense that either it'd be the intake and/or it'd be the handoff.
Correct.
But it would serve, serve a dual role then in that respect.
Right.
Okay. Well, again, I'll just offer my comments. I, I think it probably makes good sense to have a standalone, recognize you're still going to, to what Jim said, have agreement with the cities that in the event that they field those calls, then there needs to be the ability to hand it off, because otherwise, what is the handoff? You may have a clinician there, but then there's a, again, I think it gets a bit confusing, although there's some costs associated with the, with the standalone number, but in my view, I think you need to have that, so.
You know, I think standalone is good, but I just hate to reserve a number and then have the state come up with something different and have to start over. It would just be so confusing to everyone. So, that's why I'm thinking maybe start with, start with that and graduate into the other.
Well, the standalone might be that number. I mean, that may, that may be the centralized number, that everybody has that number and that, you know, that's where you funnel it through. I don't know. If I understood correctly, that was part of the discussion, you were waiting to see what the state would do with the nine.
With the 988.
988. And it would be universally, universally applicable then, and then, but we, you have to design your own system around that?
The, the intent of the original legislation was to mandate counties use 988 as a mental health crisis call-in center.
Okay.
It's very likely that there will be no mandate. And a lot of counties just don't think much of mandates, including us. So, it could be optional. It's possible there's a hybrid system that comes in where we start out with our get-care phone number, and when 988 comes in, that's just another line that comes in. There's just too much that is yet to happen for us to make a definitive answer.
Have they reserved 988? I mean, have they reserved 988? Then it's, it's already, that's roped off then. They, you, we couldn't say we want to use 988 right now without, because the state, the state has already got that number reserved.
The Federal Communications Commission has designated that, and they are not bringing it live for anybody until July 1, 2022.
I understand, okay.
Chair Frost, if I could add, the, if the 988 is going to become available in July of '22, there's a lot of costs associated with setting up a standalone call center. And I know we want to start before July of '22, but I think what we're looking for is direction on whether we continue to explore maybe the use of 911 in the interim before July of '22, or do you want us to just solely focus on a standalone number until 988 becomes available? Is that?
That's good.
I, I personally think if we use the 911, we can maybe have resources to focus our, it's, '22 isn't that far off. It's going to come pretty quickly, and this is a huge thing that we're putting together here. It's a whole new system that we're putting in place. It would seem more efficient to use the 911, in my opinion. Supervisor Desmond's queued up next.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I feel like the, when you talk about a standalone call center, that doesn't necessarily have to be inconsistent with the 911. I mean, 911 already, when they triage calls, a lot of times, they send it to other entities that are not, you know, fire or law enforcement. They send it to a host of others. So, I guess my question is, I think you put a price tag in there of 5.1 million to set up a standalone. Was it, was it your vision to have it as a, like a dispatch center with computer-aided dispatch and monitors?
Yes.
So, I guess I don't understand, why couldn't it just be, there would be a crisis response service office in the East County, you know, South County, wherever, and, and as calls come into 911, they're sent right to that phone number, or calls can be originated by the 10-digit number that, that has been created. I just, I guess I don't understand the need to have a, a full dispatch center that resembles like a fire dispatch or a law enforcement dispatch.
If we do an independent number, that is necessary. If you recall, the presentation was made in February, our call center was staffed by mental health clinicians. And so, whether the call comes in from the public or comes through 911, we have that group that does the initial triage assessment, linking folks with services so that a field response is not necessary. And regardless of which system we use, we would want that call center to be in place. If you recall my presentation, we estimated 78,000 calls coming in when the system's fully operational, but only a little over 12,000 actual field responses. That's because this call center of mental health clinicians does that triage, initial assessments, referral for service, and, and de-escalate in the situation so that a field response isn't necessary.
Okay, all right. I just, I guess if, if you just relied exclusively on, say, putting a mental health clinician in certain 911 centers throughout the county, you're still going to have a lot of those same personnel costs, it seems like, that are, that are driving the call center that you're envisioning.
Yes.
Okay.
But you won't have to have a separate call center.
Correct.
It seems a lot, a lot more efficient, but.
Well.
And either way, you're going to have to train dispatchers throughout, throughout the county. And, and, you know, when, when we were a little bit of back and forth about getting something started, you know, I, I agree with Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Serna that, boy, it would be, it would be best to get something county-wide, but I think the bottom line is, you're going to, you might run into some issues with police chiefs that will say, hey, I don't care what you want to do Sacramento County, I'm not going to abdicate our role, you know, in, in keeping citizens of my city safe, right? That's what I'm saying. We may, we may run into some practical challenges there. That was, that was my only reason for suggesting that. But, yeah, still, still a lot of issues to work through, I think, with respect to how it's going to work with those other cities, and, and whether it's embedded in a 911 center or it's standalone. I, I think I'd just like to see a little more comparison between the two and what it would take from a resource perspective.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, on, on this particular aspect of what we're contemplating here, I think there's a lot to be said for independence, whether it's the number, the call center, however you want to describe it. And let's not forget too, that if we have a separate system, and it'll, it'll take some adjusting on behalf of the public, on behalf of law enforcement agencies, no doubt, no doubt about it. But that's also why I think it's going to be extremely important to brand this appropriately and educate, do a public education campaign around it, a really, a really robust one. But, once, once it's up and running, I can, you know, certainly see that it, it would actually be a pressure relief valve of some sort for 911. So, I, I think we have to look at it both ways. That, yeah, I guess for simplicity's sake, you could wet it to the existing 911 system and perhaps not have to go through the exercise as much about branding and, and all that. But if this is really intended to get law enforcement out of the business of responding to mental health crises, I, I think we need to be very clear about it and have a, have a distinct separation, and that includes how the, the public would interact and ultimately be able to avail themselves of, of the service. So, again, you know, it's ultimately, I think it would probably end up being a cost savings to the existing 911 system.
Just ask one question, ma'am chair, just.
Sure.
So, the federal 988 will become active and available July 1 of 2022? Is that correct?
Correct.
Roughly 15 months from now?
Mm-hmm.
And, and then who's going to be responsible for taking those calls? If it's a federal system, you call 988, is every local jurisdiction either opt-in, opt-out? We've used that discussion here today on.
The states will have to opt-in, yes.
So, that, that could be lengthy. I mean, you know, it's one thing for the federal government to say you're going to have this number, but then states, the state has to opt-in, or, and if they don't, then counties can't, or cities can't do it on their own volition, right?
Correct.
So, it sounds like there's a lot more mechanics to it. It's not, it's not going to be a July 1, 2022 date, maybe effective then, but, and again, I would think if that's applicable either statewide or, or nationally, that makes good sense. And again, to what Supervisor Serna said, if we spend a lot of time and effort promoting our own number, which is well and fine for the residents of this county, and then it gets undone or gets, you know, overtaken by a more, you know, a broad effort of state or national. So, again, maybe to the point here, I guess a little more exploration of this, to have an understanding. I think having independency, I would agree with what Phil said, is important. And I think that, you know, to probably, but I can't imagine that even if we give you the direction in this very moment, that you're going to be able to stand that up, you know, in a matter of weeks. It's probably a matter of months, and it might be, so, I guess having some understanding about what that entails, not so much the budget piece of it, I think you've been pretty clear about what that takes, and there may be some options as you move into, you know, into that role if that's what we decide. But I do think having the independency in whether it's the 988 or our own number or 10-digit or, but again, recognizing that if we're going to, I guess, kind of lead on this, yeah, we're going to take some risk, and it may be, there's the budget piece of it, but, you know, we're looking at what's best for the people of this county. And I think, you know, with that in mind, you know, if we give you a few more weeks, I don't know what else will be known. If you need direction around it though, I'm, you know, I'm willing to explore how you get there, but I still, I guess I would just say I would land on the side of having something that's independent in the sense that, you know, you can go to that number and get immediate response 24/7 and for mental health crises. And if people access it through 911, that it comes back this way so that people can respond appropriately. Obviously, that's going to require cooperation by the 911 responders as well, or dispatchers, so.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. I don't see anyone else in the queue to speak. So, are we, I think we're clear that we, we want to move forward as quick as possible?
What we're not in clear on is how we accept the calls.
Right. I think what I, what I hear the board saying perhaps is some further exploration of, of this. I don't, it doesn't sound like the board's prepared to say one way or the other at this point.
I'm not sure we can, I, I have the impression, you know, in our last meeting, that public safety really wanted to be in the conversation and that after you met with them, they were, they, they were excited about what you were doing and wanted to even make a place for you in their call center to help you get started in their jurisdiction so that you're like part of them. That was, am I, did I misunderstand that?
That was one option.
Okay, so, if we're doing it countywide, we, we can't just, I don't think we can just disregard those jurisdictions without.
Not at all.
Conversation, how it happens.
What I would say is if we do that, that's a clinician in each of the 911 centers, that's a lot of staff. It would be more efficient if, if your board's desire is that we funnel it through 911 initially, then we will maintain our call center. We'd probably do it with fewer people as we initially start up. But having the calls come through 911 and referred to our call center, if that's your board's recommendation, putting a person in each of the call 111 center, 911, excuse me, 911 centers would be better, but I don't know that we'll have the staff to do that. And of course, if we choose a target city or two or three to do that with, that's, that's a lot easier.
So, you staff six different or seven different? Be six different.
That's what it sounds like Supervisor Frost is asking for, yes.
I, I don't know that I, I guess I, I was under the impression that that would be more efficient and cost-effective than a whole call center with all the equipment and
Right, right.
All the, you know, I thought that was more efficient, I guess, to start until we know we have a number that's separate, that the goal, end goal being to get a separate number.
So, Supervisor, if I may, I think I hear two things that we might have to think, give some thought to how we blend, because you would like us to get started as soon as possible on some kind of approach. So, perhaps we have to find some way of, on the interim, utilizing 911 with mental health staff. Jim makes a good point about our ability to actually get enough staff to do that, working towards a standalone system that be consistent with what the state's going to come out with. But I, I hear two things. You want a standalone system, but you want us to get started pretty quick too, so, trying to find a blend of those two things.
Can I ask a question on that then?
Sure.
So, if we were to, to do that, have some kind of interim understanding about divisional labor when it comes to receiving calls and dispatching, Bruce, is that something that you think we could deploy, let's say, you know, by this, by the summer? And then once we finalize things in September, as we draw closer perhaps to the beginning of the, the new year, we transition that?
I think we'd have to explore that Supervisor. I couldn't say definitively right now, but we could certainly explore that, what we could do.
I guess the way I'm envisioning this working, I mean practically, is that if I don't know about a separate number, let's say, I'm instinctively want to call 911. So, I call 911 and they say, this is 911, how, you know, what's your emergency? Then if they convey or they communicate to the dispatcher, a person that picks up the call, that there's a family member that's having a crisis, that's in crisis, then that dispatcher would then route that call to our clinicians or whoever's going to maintain the, the separate space that's dedicated to getting resources out for, for that, that particular incident. Seems to me that might be the first phase of it, and the second phase is, once the public and everyone else is a little more accustomed to things, as it goes, you know, including the public, the calls go directly to that, that individual or sets of individuals that, and you kind of take out over time the 911, you know.
I, I think that's what I was trying to describe. I think you did it better than I was to lay out.
I personally think.
I agree with that.
I, I agree with that too. I think, but I think even if we had all the money in the world and we could start a separate number right now, we, there would still be those people who will call 911. So, this is like that unique opportunity where we can actually have. So this is like that unique opportunity where we can actually have mental health people embedded to train 911 through the, you know, transition of, of those calls, which will happen for a year or two, or whatever, and then, and then all of a sudden, one day, they won't call 911 anymore, because they'll know it's 988. But 911, you can't just cut it off. People are still going to call there, and they're still going to transfer it to 988, even if you have that separate number. So this could be that perfect opportunity for training, you know, I guess, training forward, how it works.
Any thoughts?
No, I, I, I mean, I agree. I, I can see, envision, you know, as part of the media strategy in the future, of having billboards that say 30 days till 988 goes live, you know, and, you know, and really use that as an opportunity to brand this and get it in the zeitgeist of our community. I just wanted to use the word zeitgeist, by the way. But it, so I, I can see that. I would like to, because, you know, any decision's better made with the most information possible, so I would like to look at what the comparison is to those.
So you'd be looking at a transitional period of time?
That's what I'm hearing, yes.
Yeah. And we're glad to do that. That provides us the direction we need.
That'll, that gives you enough information to begin to build the budget, so the next time we have this conversation, we know what we're talking about in terms of cost?
Yes, sir.
I think so.
So do you need a motion? I think you summed up the previous four or five, and we just talked about number three in the...
I thought the other aspects were pretty clear, in terms of your feedback.
Okay, all right, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jim and Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
And we got a good start, making good progress today. And so at this time, I'll ask our clerk if we can go to the next item, please.
That would be county executive comments?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you.
And then you have your supervisor comments, reports, and announcements.
I have Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have announcements or comments as much as I do have three items brief that I want to touch on and would ask for some follow-up. Chance to talk to the county executive, at least on one of the items, but there are a couple of others that have come up in the intervening time. Two of them relate to Mather. Received a comment, a question last evening from one of our partners there that's working with Mather's Veterans Village. It's, was the Veterans Resource Center, I think they're nation's finest, and they've been working on a lease amendment for some time, and just going through our processes. But it was brought to my attention, and I didn't have a chance to talk to Anne, I just got the email this morning, that they're incurring some holding costs for those lease amendments, $80,000 to $100,000 a month, which could be direct services to, to veterans. And so I guess it was slated maybe to come back to us May 4, and it's been reviewed, as I understand it, through some of the county household. My request is, is if there'd be a possibility to actually get that back to us, maybe soon, I don't know if April 6 is too quick, but apparently it's been vetted. It's just a matter of getting it on our schedule, it would be a consent item, I trust. And so, Anne, if you could take a look at that, again, it seems to me if there's an ability to, you know, if everybody's in agreement to get it to us sooner rather than later, I think it would be a good thing, so.
I'll check into that.
Okay, thanks. The other item at Mather is that, in our hearing of January 2020 on Mather South, one of the, the items that came forward during the course of the conversation, and I'm sure board members may recall this, in considering the development proposal, there was a request by residents of Independence at Mather, some of the folks that live out there, who spoke and certainly in support of the efforts the county had made to, to replot the, some of the road structure out there, so it would avoid the vernal pools and the wetlands. But there was a request that to reverse a board action that was taken back in, I believe in 2007, or 2000, maybe in 2009 or 10, that proposed to rename the Zimphandel, or Eaglesness Road, from Douglas South, and name that Zimphandel, as an extension of Zimphandel Drive. And because we did a realignment of the road and so forth, folks felt it would be important to retain the historical name, Eaglesness Road. And so I had asked at the time, as part of our hearing and board action, to have that initiated and come back. I got a response last June that, well, the neighbors could initiate and so forth. I've asked several times through the course of the last few months about initiating that, and it wasn't on your watch. You know, I'm very interested, having our board consider that. You know, there are some internal costs associated with that, but we're the sole landowner between the golf course to preserve the park, and certainly in our partnership with Mather South. And so I think it makes sense, and I've asked a couple of different departmental representatives, and I don't know who's entrusted with this, but I'd like to see that get to us in, in a relatively short amount of time. Again, there's not a tremendous urgency, but I would just note that it's been in process, and I've gotten different responses from folks over time, so.
So can I, can I ask a question, Supervisor Natoli? It's my understanding that there's a cost associated with this, that usually the person requesting the change covers, and you're asking us to bring an item to you to waive that cost? Is that my understanding?
As a member of the board supervisors and representative, I'm asking that we initiate that. That was part of the conversation, if people wanted to look at it. Now, the board didn't take action to initiate it, but I'm asking for our consideration, that we initiated the initial renaming of the road, and I'm asking that we return it to its original name, and that this board take the, reverse the action that we took. So that wasn't an action that was initiated by the landowner, property owner, it was initiated by us, so. And I don't want to get too deep into it, Lisa, but I just certainly responding to the county executive, so.
Thank you.
I'd like us to reverse our action, because nobody told me about any costs that were associated with us doing the first time, so I guess we can build it into our budget. Lastly, would be, I'd like to request that we have an item placed on our May 4 agenda. Three years ago, in May of 2018, our board initiated, or reviewed a concept proposal for repurposing a, a portion of the Boys Ranch for a, an organization, Sacramento Shelter Pets Alive. Since that time, there's been a lot of discussion. They went, they went before the community and, and have submitted a revised proposal, and it's one of those things where there's, there's some urgency as it relates to that organization, a small organization, they've met some of the insurance requirements, have submitted a proposal in the last few weeks. I'd like our folks to put that as a priority and to actually have for our consideration, again, whatever staff would be recommending, but have it before us for the May 4 agenda if possible.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. The first is, well, they're both similar in that they're follow-up to actions we took last year. The first is that we have outstanding work in front of us in terms of establishing by resolution a racial equity policy cabinet, and this is subsequent to the resolution that was adopted, declaring racism a threat to public health and a public health crisis. So I just want to make sure that we're all collectively not losing sight of the fact that that needs to happen, and I'm certainly rolling up my sleeves and more than happy to work with whomever, whether that's Lisa and her staff, and her staff, to, to get that teed up so that we can get in front of the board for consideration. And then similarly, we adopted, as was mainly mentioned at our last meeting, we adopted a, a, a resolution establishing a commission on girls and women's issues here in Sacramento County. We, we need to go through the exercise of actually filling the seats on that, that commission, and we have specific appointments to, to consider. So those two items I'm, I'm looking at, and just as a way for her to kind of keep me on track and remind me frequently if I'm not making any progress. But it's something I'd like to try and get done by the summer. I don't think it's going to be too much work.
We are actively working on both of those items, and I can keep you apprised.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And at this time, we do have an adjournment in memory by Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Sunday, March 21, 2021, Ed Marzel, a longtime resident of Carmichael, passed away peacefully, surrounded by his family. Ed was a living embodiment of the American dream, a self-made man who came from nothing and built an incredible business with his hard work, ingenuity, and natural intelligence and charm. Ed began his business, California Retail Management, in Carmichael, and now the business has petroleum operations in four U.S. states. Ed was an Ohio college graduate who served in the Army, then sold auto accessories, and later created one of the most thriving businesses in Sacramento. He was known for his personal touch with his customers and putting family first as his business model. Ed is survived by Susan, his wife, and two children, Annie and Adam Marzel, and two grandchildren born in the last year, I believe. Annie and Adam are executives in the family business. They described their dad as an incredible father and grandfather, and thoroughly enjoyed being able to work alongside him. Ed was known for his humor and boundless generosity. He will be greatly missed in the community, but his legacy will carry on with the Marzel family and the incredible work he was able to accomplish during his life. Please join me in honoring Ed Marzel and adjourning today in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned in memory of Ed Marzel. May he rest in peace.